Madam Clerk? The time is 7:14. We'll report out of closed session. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The Emeryville City Council and the Mesa Board met in closed session on the items listed on the closed session agenda regarding item 5.1.1. An update was provided and direction was given. Regarding item 6.1.1, an update was provided and direction was given. That's the conclusion of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:14. That meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk, I call to order at 7:14, management of Emeryville Services Authority, please take the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Pats?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bowders?
Here. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion for Member Pats and a second for Member Donahue to approve the final agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye.
Ex parte communications, any from members? Seeing and hearing none, public comment for the consent agenda or items not on this agenda? We're not at the regular council meeting yet, Mr. Carpio. Thank you. No public comment on this item. I'll take a motion on the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
A motion for Member Pats and a second for Member Donahue to approve consent. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. The time is 7:15, Madam Clerk. That meeting is adjourned. At 7:15, I call to order Emeryville Successor Agency as the successor to the Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still present. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I move.
I'll second.
Motion for Member Donahue, second for Member Pats to approve the final agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Ex parte communications, seeing and hearing none, public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda for the Redevelopment Agency. Seeing and hearing none, I'll take a motion on the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Vice Mayor Medina and a second from Member Donahue to approve consent. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:16. The meeting is adjourned.
The time is 7:16. I call to order the City Council of the City of Emeryville. For the benefit of the public, we're on the regular agenda at this time. And at this time, Madam Clerk, all members are still present. I'll take a motion to approve this agenda.
I move approval.
I'll second.
I have a motion for Member Donahue and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Special orders of the day, the introduction of the new accounting supervisor, Gilbert. Susan Shea, hi.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm pleased to introduce to you our new accounting supervisor, Gilbert Punzelen. Gilbert comes from the city of Berkeley, where he worked for the past year as the senior accountant. Prior to the city of Berkeley, Gilbert worked for eight years with the cities of Camarillo and Thousand Oaks in Southern California. Before joining the public sector, Gilbert worked for a CPA firm for about two years. When not working, Gilbert enjoys exploring the Bay Area, playing sports, and trying the various restaurants in the area. Please join me in welcoming Gilbert to the Emeryville family. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Gilbert. You want to say anything?
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for having me today, and it's an honor to be working for the city of Emeryville. I busted out my bowtie.
I was going to say, somebody give you a tip about how to make a first impression.
And it's not a clip-on. It's a real bowtie.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
It doesn't score as many points as you think.
I don't know. Well, you're already in accounting and finance. That makes me happy, but you're wearing a bowtie, and I appreciate that.
And hopefully be able to help the city do some good things.
Well, we expect that you will do that in full. So thank you very much for being here, and welcome to the city.
Welcome aboard.
All right. That's our special order of the day. Announcements of commission and committee vacancies. Madam Clerk?
Mayor and Councilmembers, as you know, we did our annual appointments at the last meeting, but we left several vacancies unfilled. So we are going to open up a new recruitment that will open and be posted as of tomorrow and will close about 45 days later on September 10th. So we have an opening on pretty much every committee that we have. So encourage everyone within the sound of my voice. If you're interested in participating in city, please go online and apply. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember, special announcements, reports on meetings and attendance. Christian Pats, do you have any?
No, my meetings were canceled this month.
Okay. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes. On Saturday, I had the pleasure of attending a very special B-PAC meeting where the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee put together a pedestrian and biking tour of the city. It was extremely well attended. Councilmember Donahue joined me at that, and many of our staff members made it out. So I'd like to thank Marcin Navarre, Mike and Robert for coming out, Mike and Ryan, sorry, for coming out on their Saturday and joining us for that wonderful event, and everyone in the community who came to walk around and talk about transportation infrastructure in Emeryville.
Thank you. Member Martinez?
Yes, just this past week at the East Bay Community Energy Meeting, we passed our local development business plan, which makes the CCA in Alameda County the most original CCA, I would say, in the country because we're working really hard to make sure that not only is our energy green, but that we're going to be creating local jobs and infrastructure. So this, I have a copy available if anyone wants to take a look at it, but it can also be found at ebc.org under Resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Donahue, do you have any?
No.
Okay. I do.
Oh, no.
So, the other night, communities, where's Pedro?
He's on vacation.
Vacation.
This is no fun. So the other night, the city of Emeryville had its annual dive-in movie, and it was The Little Mermaid. And Vice Mayor Medina was there fork in hair to be Ariel, and I had agreed to go as Prince Eric for the movie. And so there we are, showed up early to support the community services staff, the lifeguards, welcome and greet all the kids and their parents. You know, we were there having a good time. And then, Councilmember Pats showed up as Ursula, and Councilmember Martinez showed up as Sebastian, and neither Ally nor I knew that. So we got this great city council photo. My favorite questions of the evening included a parent asking me, gosh, where do they get so many Disney character actors in Emeryville? And I said, what do you mean? And they said, well, do you work for Disney? And I said, no, I'm your mayor, to which the parent laughed and said, sure, right. And then Ally was like, no, actually, and I'm the vice mayor. And they were like, what? So we had a good time. And there you can see, before the sunset, we had almost 200 kids and their parents at the dive-in movie. We do this once a year. There is such demand for it that we may do a second movie next year. That's a rumor right now. I'm sure Pedro would not be happy to hear me say, we might do two of these. And then after dark, the movie played, the kids still played in the pool. And I had to close this slideshow with Councilmember Pats tormenting his child. So the photo op was good, but, and that costume, by the way, was a fan favorite. He's got one of the, I don't know what you call that kind of dress, but he basically duct taped homemade trash-bag tentacle arms that have bubble wrap that he painted. I mean, this, like, this was a full investment. I want to applaud you for your investment in this. I just had to put on, like, pirate gear, and you did the whole nine yards. So, anyway, that's the end of the slideshow. But I just wanted to announce that we had that fun event, and if you don't come to our community services events, you should, and we'll have a number of them this fall. Besides that, the only other thing I wanted to announce was that this past week, the Art Center Blue Ribbon Panel interviewed the three semifinalists for the proposed Art Center, and we expect that that will come to council in September, October, with the staff recommendations and the community panel and the artist group. All, when they're all completed, we will see that done. But I want to thank the members of the community who participated in that with staff, and that is the rest of my update. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, there's no way I could top that last report, so I have no report.
Okay, great. Are there ex parte communications? I'll start with Member Donahue.
No.
None from Member Donahue. Member Martinez?
I just have a couple. On item 12.1, I emailed back and forth with Tony Garcia from East Bay Therapeutics. And then on item 12.2, the parking item, I emailed back and forth with the resident, Eric Maki, and I believe a copy of his email. I had the city clerk print that out for council members. It's on your desk.
Okay. Vice Mayor Medina?
I received communication on item 12.2 as well from members of the Doyle Hollis Neighborhood. Several of them, I think we reported out on last time, but I did not respond to any of the emails, so I think we're going on ex parte.
Okay. Member Pats?
Just emails from residents on the parking.
Okay. On, for me, on item 12.1, I had conversations with Sean Luce of Rochambeau and Nasser Zimi of East Bay Therapeutics. I also received an email from Jennifer and Chelsea at Kikoko. On item 12.2, I held a town hall on the parking management plan for the property and business owners in the Doyle Street neighborhood last week. There were about 30 members in attendance. On item 12.3, I had a meeting with the Alameda County Fire Department, and that would be the end of ex parte communications. Item nine is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on this agenda. Mr. Carpio, I know you want to talk about 10.9. Now is your chance to do that. Yes, and you come to the podium now. Members of the public who wish to speak on items not on this agenda or on the consent agenda have three minutes to do so.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio, and 10.9 item caught my attention is because it's about the bridge, the pedestrian bridge. It's going to be a wonderful construction, but from the beginning, as you should know, I've objected because the technology is about 100 years old. And at the first meeting, I did propose to apply the aircraft technology, the space technology for the construction of bridges. But in the meantime, I was proposed that at the junkyard, the airplane junkyard, where they store all the airplanes they're not used anymore, you could get a whole fuselage without the wing for about the price of aluminum, which is $12,000. It's all made. All we need is to install it, and $50,000 will install with the opening in front and the back, and it will be an enclosed bridge, in which it's large enough to have dining room all around, and people could lounge there and have some kind of a cabaret in the bridge. Right now, what we have, we have an open bridge there that's going to be subject to the weather, it rain, wind, and all that. And so it's going to be another uncomfortable bridge. Jack, if you want to go to the Bay Bridge, it's going to be the same thing. So here, we talk about question of economics, and the question of economics here doesn't make much sense to me. Of course, I'm used to, you stuff and junk stuff, you know, it may not, you may not like that, but me, that's what I would do. I would take all airplanes, 747, and install it, and there we have the bridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpio. Other members of the public who wish to comment on the consent items or not on this agenda items?
Hi, members of the council. My name is Eric Burcha, and this, you know, is not an agenda item, but we wanted to just, you know, I, we have a business over on 1320 67th Street, and over the last, last week, on Friday, we actually had an accident at our location that had, you know, a five-car pileup and a lot of structural damage to our building. And I just wanted to thank the Emeryville Police Department and the Fire Department for your quick response, and not only for helping us get through the entire process, but giving us information on how we can get our door fixed. And I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the council, how much we appreciate that, and how lucky we are to have such a great, you know, great civil servants in our, in our community. So thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public?
Okay, I would like to use this here. Can I do that?
You may.
Hold on, I'm sorry. This is a docu-
It's upside down.
Just use the microphone at the podium. She'll turn it around for you.
Is there a handheld mic?
No.
Okay. Okay. This is a document. I don't know if you can see it on the television or not?
Yes, we can.
That I, okay, that I received from the city of Emeryville, and this is Emeryville's response to my public record request for, to find, so we can find out, how is it that the, the public lobby at the police station on the second floor doesn't have a fire escape, a legal fire escape? And it's a legitimate question. The public has interest in getting an answer. So this is the document I got back after waiting for two weeks for my public records request. As you can see, it's 100% redacted. Now, I, I can understand how the city of Emeryville has interest in withholding certain sensitive information about the police station, for instance, where the weapons are held, or the ammunition, or, you know, other such things that are sensitive, but I didn't request that. I requested to see where the drawings of the public lobby are. And it, this is absurd on its face because the public lobby is public. We can see it right now. I can go there with a tape measure, take drawings and take measurements. But I had an interest because I wanted to find out, how is it that we lost our, formerly, we had a public, we had a public easement, a fire escape, and now we no longer have one after our remodel in 2012. So this, this is drawings from the remodel in 2012, and you can see it's 100% redacted. So this is what passes for transparency in the city of Emeryville. The city has no interest in not, in keeping from the public drawings of their own lobby, of the public lobby. The city has no interest. And yet, look at this drawing right here, 100% redacted. Now, I was told before I was given this by the city clerk, that I would not be able to take pictures of the drawings that they're going to show me, nor could I take the drawings away from the building because they're proprietary. But after I received this document, I was able to walk out with it. And I asked the city clerk, why is it you are letting me walk out with this drawing? He told me I couldn't even take pictures of it, let alone walk out with it. And the city clerk said, because there's nothing of any value on this drawing. And that's correct. There is nothing of any value. And so this is what, this is, this is transparency, this is what passes for transparency in the city of Emeryville.
Your public comment?
Just so everybody knows, this is what they call transparency.
Other members of the public who wish to comment on the consent agenda or items not on this agenda? Seeing and hearing none, public comment is closed. Oh, all right. Come on up.
I'm guessing I don't have-
Please use the microphone.
I'm guessing I don't have the right agenda. There probably is, I don't see a green one.
The green one.
Okay, so my guess is the parking's on the, that-
We're coming up to that.
Okay. There's a second issue I did want to talk about briefly, and just maybe even to see where I should bring this issue up. So on the intersection of Doyle and Powell, there is a crosswalk that has a little person sign in the middle of it that none of the cars seem to notice or care about. It has two, it's like a four-lane section. I frequently run, or bike, or have a baby and stroll to the park that's nearby. Every once in a while, a first car will stop, a second car won't notice, and I'll have to be really careful, particularly if it's a truck or a large van. I think it would be really wonderful if we could get just those little blinky lights that-
Actually going to install a full traffic intersection there.
Beautiful. Thank you guys so much.
Welcome.
Wow, that was a fun one.
That was the best public comment today. Not that I rate them.
It's not a contest.
Yeah. Are there other members of the public who wish to comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will move beyond that public comment to the consent calendar. Are there items that members wish to pull from consent? Member Pats?
I do. I'd like to pull 1011, please.
Okay, item 10.11 has been pulled. Member Medina?
No.
You have any? None. Member Martinez?
No.
Member Donahue?
No.
I'm pulling 10.7 for a presentation of the item. Is there a motion on the remaining items, which is 10.1 through 10.10 excluding 10.7?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
There's a motion from Vice Mayor Medina and a second from Member Pats to approve items 10.1 through 10.6, 10.8 through 10.10. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Those items are approved. We'll move to item 10.7. Item 10.7 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville calling on the United States Congress to award Chinese-American World War II veterans with the Congressional Gold Medal. We pulled this item because we are honored to have a couple guests here this evening, and we thought that we would do a formal presentation at their request. So humor me for one moment. Thank you, Sherri. Can you, can we turn this on, Sherri? Okay, wait, it's not, oh. Are we good? It's not standard practice to read a resolution at city council, but we're making an exception for this item today. Su Chen is with me here, and she's going to introduce some other people briefly after I've read this resolution. This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville calling on the United States Congress to award Chinese-American World War II veterans with the Congressional Gold Medal. Whereas Chinese-Americans have served on behalf of the United States in every conflict since the American Civil War, and whereas more than 13,000 Chinese-Americans have served in all branches of Army Ground and Air Forces by the end of World War II, despite the total population of Chinese-Americans living in the United States being under 120,000, and whereas Chinese-American soldiers made significant contributions to World War II efforts, as they served in the theaters of both combat and support roles, including in New Guinea, Iwo Jima, the Philippines, North Africa, Italy, the Normandy D-Day invasion, and the Battle of the Bulge, and whereas nearly 25% of enlisted Chinese-Americans served in the U.S. Army Air Force, and many were assigned to the 14th Air Service Group, which they comprised primarily of Chinese-Americans, based on the China-Burma-India theater providing effective communications, supply, transportation, and technical support to advance war efforts. And whereas despite the valor, patriotism, and bravery exhibited by Chinese-Americans, they faced blatant institutional racism and prejudice at home, especially as the Chinese Exclusion Act of 1882 continued to restrict Chinese immigrants to the United States, and whereas approximately 40% of Chinese-American soldiers were not native-born citizens of the United States and were unable to naturalize even after 1943, when the Chinese Exclusion Act was finally repealed. And whereas on May 4, 2017, the United States House of Representatives, House Bill 2358 and Senate Bill 1050, titled "The Chinese-American World War II Veterans Congressional Gold Medal Act," which are hereby declared to be part of this resolution as if fully set forth herein, were introduced in the United States House of Representatives and the United States Senate to award the Congressional Gold Medal to Chinese-American veterans of World War II. And whereas other historically overlooked military units, such as the Filipino World War II veterans, the Navajo code talkers, and the Monument men, have all already been honored with the Congressional Gold Medal, the highest civil honor awarded by Congress. And whereas the City Council in the City of Emeryville supports the recognition of all service members, particularly those marginalized by our history, and whereas the Congressional Gold Medal would serve as a symbol of gratitude for our country's indebtedness for the selfless sacrifices made in the face of enormous adversity, and whereas the timing of the passage of the congressional bills is crucial, as many Chinese-American World War II veterans are quite elderly, and some are no longer alive to see this recognition, and both congressional bills have been stalled at respective committees, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Emeryville urges the United States Congress to expeditiously pass these bills to award Congressional Gold Medal to Chinese-American veterans who served in World War II. And be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Emeryville hereby directs the city clerk to transmit copies to the members of the United States House of Representatives from the East Bay Area and the United States Senators from the state of California with a request to take necessary actions to achieve, achieve the objections of this resolution. If voted upon, it would be adopted by the City Council of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held Tuesday, July 24. Please join me in welcoming Su Chen. I'm going to ask you to give some remarks and introduce others.
Thank you, Mayor Bowders and city council members. Tonight is very important, and in 1998, the journalist Tom Brokaw wrote the book, The Greatest Generation, that profiles men and women who served in World War II. He said, "It is, I believe, the greatest generation any society has ever produced." As noted in tonight's resolution, Chinese-Americans played a significant part in the war effort. They fought valiantly and bravely, and many paid the ultimate price to protect our country. This in spite of the fact that the Chinese Exclusion Act was still in effect. Many were not citizens at the time of their service because citizenship was denied because of the Chinese Exclusion Act. This recognition of their dedication and that valor is long overdue. It's important that we take note of the sacrifices and contributions of immigrants to the wartime America, even as our communities bore the burden of discrimination. The two bills need to be passed by the end of this year, when Congress concludes. And so this is why we are doing this throughout the nation. I, along with the members of the Asian Pacific American Democratic Caucus, reached out to all of the cities in Alameda County, and I'm proud to say that 12 of the 14 are going to be passing resolutions or already have. We're still working on Livermore and Piedmont. So I'm pleased that also Senators Boxer and Feinstein, as well as our representatives Swalwell, Barbara Lee, and Ro Khanna have all signed on as cosponsors. This national effort is intended to ensure that the achievements and contributions of the Greatest Generation will never be forgotten. And so I have, on the, projected here is my father. He is na- he was Army Private First Class Lang Li. His Chinese name was Li Ong Ling. He was in Company C, 120th Infantry, wounded in Normandy, awarded the Purple Heart and the Bronze Star for heroic service, and he was a proud member of the disabled veterans, as well as veterans of foreign war. And standing next to me is my 92-year-young mother, who would like to say a few words of appreciation.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the- Well, thank you for the support, and I hope on the Congress, in Washington, DC, they could make it all pass. That'd be wonderful. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Oh, of course, no problem. So you have to hold it so it doesn't-
You hold it.
This way, she'll take a picture of anything.
Oh, 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 okay.
I got it.
Got it?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. This time, I'll take a motion, item 10.7.
Second.
Motion for Member Pats, second from Vice, I'm sorry, from Member Martinez to approve item 10.7. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Item 10.11, Member Pats.
So we talked about this last time, and I just put some thought into it, and I've checked with the city attorney, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'd like to make a motion to approve this with one small change, and that's 5-29.09, the smoking lounge prohibition. I'd like to strike that from the ordinance.
Hold on. Let me find this now. In the draft ordinance, which page are you on?
I'm sorry, I'm going to buy line number. Let me scroll down. There are, page 11 of 14.
Okay, item 5-29.09?
Yeah.
Your request is to strike the prohibition on tobacco shop smoke lounges?
Correct. So this doesn't mean that would legalize them. They would still have to get permits and all of that. It just means that if somebody did propose that business, they would have the option to bring it. I, I don't know the process. I'd probably get a use permit the whole process. So it would, it would not be something that would happen overnight or easily, but I feel like if we're going to allow cannabis smoking or cannabis use, if there, and I can't imagine that there's a building that would fall and to be able to use this in Emeryville, but a building that wanted to allow it. in Emeryville, but a building that wanted to allow it. This at least opens the door ever so slightly. Now, I was going to say, I checked with the city attorney, and correct me if I'm wrong, this doesn't derail the timeline to get this ordinance in place, correct?
Well, right. So, if you were to adopt the... If you were to make the amendment that's proposed, the council wouldn't have to reintroduce a new first reading with a second reading to be adopted at the following meeting. However, given that the ordinance's effective date is December 1st, you would still be able to adopt a new first reading and the second reading in order to make that December 1st deadline.
Okay, discussion. Member Medina?
I'm happy to support it with this change.
Member Martinez?
I attempted to leave support, but I'd like to open this up for public comment.
Okay, Member Donahue?
Same thing about public comment.
Okay, so let's open this item for public comment. Members wish to have public comment. We're having comment on item 10.11, which is the second reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville repealing and replacing Chapter 29 of Title V of the Emeryville Municipal Code related to smoking pollution control. Members of the public who wish to comment on this item have three minutes to do so. Are there any members who wish to speak?
And Mr. Mayor, may I ask that somebody on staff put up the part that we intend to strike, which is 5-29.09 on the overhead?
Sure. While that's happening, Mr. Freund's entitled to three minutes. Please start the clock.
Believe it or not, I'm not going to take up three minutes. I didn't even expect to be commenting on this because I plan to congratulate you for passing this ordinance. It's been very dear to my lungs, heart, and nose for a long time. So, my only concern is if any delay might, I don't know, lead to some opposition developing in the city to this, and whether you can commit as a council formally to make sure it passes by the same effective date as the ordinance is now reading, because a lot of people at Watergate are very, very concerned about the adoption of the exclusive use prohibition from multi-unit housing. So, is that something you can...
We will discuss that. We'll discuss it. Other members of the public who wish to comment? Tamika?
Good evening, Council. My only real question about this is if you are going to ensure that any place where there might be smoking lounges in the future, that there is no multi-unit housing connected to that building. So, that's my main concern, if you can ensure somehow that there is no possibility that multi-unit housing will be connected to a smoking lounge.
Thank you. Other members of the public wish to comment? Seeing that, we'll bring it back for discussion. I'll start over here this time. Member Donahue, do you have anything you wish to discuss?
I could go along with this in that, you know, smoking is still legal. This would be private facility. I think that it's... I don't see how it would hurt the public general interest.
Member Martinez?
I don't have anything to add at this time.
So, Member Medina, do you have anything to add?
Phrasing suggestion, we could say, smoking shall be prohibited... Smoking lounges shall be prohibited within 25 feet of a multi-unit complex. Or, but I mean, it also still has to go through planning.
Yeah. I'll give my comments before. I oppose your request. Tobacco smoking is a known cause of cancer. It's one of the leading causes of death in the United States. It's terrible for heart health. It's terrible for human health. I know that we're not explicitly creating tobacco shops, but as I mentioned at my last comments on this, growing up in a household with my grandparents and my aunts and uncles where nine people smoked, I was very sick as a child, and I don't think... If I could make tobacco smoking illegal in the entire United States, I would do it today. So, I have a very strong opinion about this because I don't... People who smoke tobacco have the ability to smoke it in a public right-of-way. They're not unduly burdened from accessing smoking spaces, and the goal of creating this ordinance is to protect the health of people who wish to be kept from that, and there are people who, just like drug addiction, there are people who due to the addictive nature of the substance they use, will use in a space like this, and I think that to the extent that we can reduce the adverse effects of secondhand smoke and indoor smoke spaces, which also contribute to poor building quality and also create higher fire risks, I don't see the value of this. I'm trying to understand, I guess, why you feel we need to abort the second reading tonight and remove this. So, again, I think that I have a challenge. So, let me back up. I grew up in a house of smokers as well. I'm not a fan of smoking. I don't see this... I don't see us ever permitting a smoking lounge. My challenge is, is we've... We're doing an end run around sort of saying we're going to outlaw smoking, which I think is more than we can do. The city just did a flavored tobacco thing, which shut down what few smoking lounges were there. You know, if it's legal and people want to have a business, and the ban because of OSHA laws, Cal-OSHA laws, you can't have any employees. So, there's a lot of challenges of setting this up. You know, we are not effectively eliminating smoking. We're simply making it harder and harder to find a place to do it. I share your concerns. I just think this is the only time this ordinance is coming up before us. I don't think anybody would ever bring this ordinance back to remove this language. I'm giving future generations the option of having this type of business if someone should find the right circumstances to open it up, and that's... But what would those circumstances be, if I can ask? Because I mean, we're trying to create fewer spaces where 18- and 25-year-olds who may be lured into smoking go with a friend who's already smoking into one of these lounges and become addicted to smoking. I mean, the point of limiting and prohibiting something that's a known health hazard to the public is to actually create, incentivize better health for the community and the public, and to me, prohibiting a smoking lounge is completely consistent with the overarching goals of this ordinance, which is designed to protect the public health. I appreciate that point of view. The purpose of the ordinance changes that we were making was to protect people from secondhand smoke, and so if you're telling me now that we're just doing an end run around smoking in general and doing as much outlawing as we can against smoking, that's fine, but let's say that. We presented this ordinance change as an opportunity to keep people... I'll use the Watergate as the perfect example. You know, if you live in Watergate, you should not be subjected to somebody smoking three floors and 12 buildings over from you, and that's why we're bringing this ordinance. That's why I'm supporting this ordinance. I, you know, the last legal place to smoke in Emeryville becomes my home. And so, when I think about... This is, you know, and again, I didn't expect this to be a very long discussion. I don't foresee this particular council approving a smoking lounge, but if somebody has a business, you know, they wouldn't call it a smoking lounge. They'd call it a hookah lounge. They would call it some other things. If they presented that, you know what? It's a legal activity. I mean, we're going to be right back here doing each thing individually. If it's a legal activity, I don't see any reason why they shouldn't be a place where people can do it. So, that's my argument.
Member Martinez?
So, I wrongly assumed that you pulled it in the case that we had a cannabis smoking lounge, because restrictions on cannabis smoking are more onerous than they are on tobacco smoking, so...
It's part of the same thing, though. It would allow for a cannabis lounge by pulling this.
Our cannabis ordinance allows for a cannabis lounge, correct? Yes, it does.
So, how does this overlay with our cannabis ordinance to staff if smoking lounges are prohibited, if the definition of smoking includes cannabis?
Sorry, the ordinance on page... Six, I believe. The ordinance on page six calls out cannabis lounges, and we also, when we were taking forward the planning regulations to allow for cannabis activity within the city...
Right.
We carved out the exception for smoking. So, we contemplated that ahead of time, and that cannabis is separate than a smoking lounge for tobacco.
So that there's no conflict here, even though we set the definition of smoking to be any synthetic or natural material, including tobacco and cannabis or synthetics thereof?
The definition of smoke is now just limited to tobacco and tobacco synthetic products, whereas cannabis, instead, what we're doing is incorporating the state law.
Right.
So, that's... They are treated...
They are... So, they are separate. Okay, thank you. We've been through a couple of versions of this, so excuse my confusion.
So, I'm sorry, the definition of a smoking lounge on page four, line item M, says, "smoking tobacco products or any other weed, plant, or combustible substance, including cannabis."
That cannabis should not be there.
So, I think because now we have... Whichever way we go...
The last sentence says excludes a place that has a cannabis sales conditional use permit. The last... On the next page, paragraph M still says that cannabis is exempted.
Yes. I'm sorry. We've been through a lot of reiteration.
All right. So, with that clarification, then I don't support striking that clause. Thank you.
You may.
Yeah, so, what I'm picturing... I kind of actually have a picture in my head of what Krishnan is talking about, because I've been to one. It's called The Pub in Albany. It's a standalone unit that is very British in nature, where people can hand-roll tobacco if you're into that sort of thing. Not my kind of thing, but I've been there, and they've got board games. I think there's a precedent for this being a legal activity, and if... My reason for supporting this ordinance, which I think is fantastic in general, is that this protects people from secondhand smoke in their residences. It does still allow smoking in the right-of-way, which we have to allow in the public right-of-way, and I don't see a problem with having a place where people can congregate to do so outside of the right-of-way, which I think is actually preferable to all of us. So, I'm going to support if there's a motion.
Is there any other discussion on the item? I'll entertain a motion on the item.
So, I move the item with the amended change of striking 5.29.09.
I'll second.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve this at second reading.
Second.
There's a motion by Mayor Bouders and a second by Member Martinez to approve the second reading of this ordinance. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
No.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Patz?
No.
Vice Mayor Medina?
No.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. Is there another motion? The original motion is by Member Patz, seconded by Vice Mayor Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
No.
Councilmember Patz?
Aye.
Council... Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
No. The motion passes three to two. Onto item 11, Public Hearings, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville approving a conditional use permit, a design review permit for Ocean Avenue Townhomes involving the demolition of an existing single-family home and its replacement with a three-unit residential building at 1270 Ocean Avenue, Navar Oaks.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
All right, so I have a presentation for you tonight, and the applicant is also here and would like to address the council after my presentation. On the dais is a materials board. It is made out of wood, so you may get some wood particles on your hand, just so you know. So, you can take a look at that as we go through the presentation. So, this is about 1270 Ocean Avenue. So, here is the neighborhood that we're talking about, and the highlighted in red is the property that we're looking at tonight. So, for orientation, Peabody Lane, which is a private access road, is on the north side. Ocean Avenue is on the south side, and this is between Doyle to the west and Vallejo to the east. So, for project overview, pardon me, this is for demolishing an existing single-family home and its accessory structures to build a one-three-bedroom and two-four-bedroom units, a driveway located along Peabody Lane, and this requires City Council approval upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission due to the demolition of the existing residential unit. So, here are some existing site photos. The photos at the top are of the single-family home. The photos at the bottom are accessory buildings at the site. And here is a picture of the proposed structure from Ocean Avenue, from the west elevation, from the east elevation. So, these would be facing the neighbors on either side of the property, and the garages along Peabody Lane with a porch on top of the garages and residents above. So, for some background on this project, this was originally taken in in May 26 as a four-unit project with a driveway on the east side of the property. The project went to the January 2017 Planning Commission for a study session, and the Planning Commission gave a feedback at that time that the project was too large and out of character with the neighborhood. In response to that, after that meeting, the applicant held a community meeting in April of 2017 and redesigned the unit for three units with a driveway on the west side of the property and to give a little bit more of a buffer between the new building proposed and the existing residence to the neighboring side of the property. And the community was generally supportive and felt that the project was revised and better suited to the neighborhood, but staff feedback at that time was the driveway was not feasible in that location and to relocate the parking to Peabody Lane. So, in December 2017, there was a Planning Commission study session. The plans had been revised again in response to those previous comments from both Planning Commission and staff and the community. So, the design and materials were modified. The driveway from Ocean was removed. All parking was put on Peabody Lane. The building was stepped back from both Peabody and Ocean, and family-friendly features were added, which wasn't required because this is a project of less than 10 units, but the applicant decided to take that step anyway. There was no public comment at that meeting, and the Planning Commission comments were that the materials on the third floor of the east elevation should be changed from shingle to board and batten to provide more detailed landscaping plans, and the Commission expressed appreciation for the applicant's response to previous comments. As you may recall, in January 2018, the project then came to City Council for a study session. The plans were the same ones as had been seen by the Planning Commission in December. And three community members spoke with concerns about relocating the home instead of demolishing it, the existing structure, that is, concern about losing existing housing in the neighborhood, and concerns about parking ratios and impacts to Peabody Lane. The City Council feedback at that time was concern over the project massing, if the design fitted in with the RM and NH zones where this project is located, the siding of parking and the setbacks along Peabody Lane, the amount of landscaping and hardscaping involved in the project, the proximity of the trash enclosure to the common open space, adequacy of the waste bins for all three streams, and wanted to make sure that the waste streams were appropriately sized, and confirmation that comments from Planning Commission and City Council and community had been addressed appropriately when the project came back again to you tonight. So, I'm going to go slowly through the next steps to show you how those comments have been addressed. So, to our concern over project massing, the new packet that has been revised, Sheet A 6.1, shows the full building massed from lot line to lot line. The design fit within the RM and the NH zones, the design of a residential project is consistent with our neighborhood. It conforms to density regulations and utilizes setbacks, site designs, and building design, including gabled roofs to be respectful of NH, which means North Hollis Overlay Zone. The siding of the parking and the setback along Peabody Lane is maintaining the proposed location of parking along Peabody Lane. That was not changed. The reasons for this are several. One, it maximizes the amount of the area available for landscaping. If you were to relocate the parking anywhere else on the property, it would require more hardscape, which was a concern that the City Council also had. So, it minimizes the area needed for driveways. It also maintains the existing amount of on-street parking on Ocean. If there was a driveway located on Ocean, it would then remove on-street parking on Ocean. And it also utilizes Peabody Lane in a way that is consistent with how other neighborhoods... Pardon me, how other neighbors with access to Peabody Lane access that private road, and I'll be going into that a little bit more deeply in a moment. The amount of landscaping and hardscaping, so again, maintaining where the location of the parking maximizes the amount of landscaping available, and this is seen on Sheets A 2.1 and 2.2, that also provide more landscaping details in the previous plans. And the proximity of the trash enclosure to the common open... of the trash enclosure to the common open space has been mitigated by relocating the bicycle parking that's for guests to be placed between those features, so there's a little bit more of a buffer. Also, in terms of the waste bins and all three streams, making sure they're adequately accommodated. Waste management is not able to provide service to Peabody Lane because it is a private road, so it necessitates the trash enclosure being placed along Ocean Avenue. And sheet A 0.4, which shows all of the waste bins and their sizing, has been reviewed by Public Works, and they've determined it is adequate for the size of the project, and has appropriate placement for waste management access. So confirmation that the comments have been addressed. The building is stepped back from both Ocean and Peabody, and removed the driveway originally proposed to run the length of the property. There's a secure trash enclosure, the trash closure that's proposed for Long Ocean Avenue is, can be secured, so there was concern from neighbors that people could rummage the trash if there wasn't enclosure, so it's lockable. And increasing the setback from the west side of the property, more space now exists for the proposed building than the existing buildings have. So here's some changes from when you last saw the plans. So you can see the board and batting has been added to the third floor elevation there on the east side. And I know it's hard to see because it's so small on this slide, but the previous landscaping and the revised landscaping are modified and that there's more details provided. There is an increase in the amount of pretty escape, and there's buffers between the common open space and the trash, like I mentioned before. So in regards to required yards and tree removal permits, the location of the garage does not require a variance. When I last came here, we talked about findings for a variance, but upon review of the requirements, the location of the garage and the rear setback and the trash enclosure and the front setback both require a conditional use permit. There is no special findings for that conditional use permit. It's the same findings as for the general project itself. Also, a tree removal permit was granted by the Planning Commission, and it does not require City Council approval, and the City Council did not appeal this decision. That permit was granted because the trees that are existing were determined not to be in good enough shape to be preserved, so they will be replaced with adequate soil volume for new trees to grow. So, at the June Planning Commission meeting that we just had a short while ago, two community members spoke at that meeting. The property owner of 1264 Ocean requested that the existing home not be demolished but be moved to his property, and when addressing the Commission, the applicant stated that they were open to this concept here. And the owner of the property directly west of 1270 Ocean asked if there would be further opportunities for public comment and raised concerns about access to their property during construction. And the director clarified the approval process and opportunities for public comment, and clarified that construction would not impede access to adjacent properties.
Can you stop on that? I just have a quick question.
Absolutely.
Did we advise the owner of 1270 that this hearing was tonight?
Yes, they're here.
The owner of, or not 1270, the property to the west of 1270.
Everybody was given notifications.
Of the city.
Yes, and the notification boards were updated on-site as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So at that same meeting in June 28th for Planning Commission where they were reviewing the revised project, it's before you tonight, the City Consulting Arboretum, Molly Bachelder, presented a brief overview of the written report regarding the Ocean Avenue street trees. The Planning Commission asked questions, and Molly clarified that work on the sidewalk would result in further decline of the trees. The pruning might help the trees, but it wouldn't address existing issues with tree roots or fungal pathogens, and current standards for rootable soil will help new trees grow larger and faster than existing trees. And thus, the Planning Commission approved the tree removal permit. Before voting, each Planning Commissioner took time to praise the applicant for their responsiveness to both neighborhood and commission comments and concerns, and the Commission voted unanimously to approve the tree removal permit and to recommend City Council approval to the condition, for, of the conditional use permit and design review permit. The Commission didn't make any changes to the conditions of approval. So moving into the project for your review tonight, here is the existing site facing Ocean, and here is the proposed elevation. So for the general plan, this is an area of stability. The land use classification is medium-density residential. It's a multi-unit, multi-unit residential is conditionally permitted in this zone, and it's in the North Hollis Overlay, which does not modify permitted uses. So here's a map of the areas of stability site, and this, the project site is noted with a little red circle on all of these maps. So here's the medium-density residential designation and the North Hollis Overlay. For zoning districts, it's in the medium-density residential zone, where multi-unit residential is conditionally permitted, as I said, and the North Hollis Overlay. And the zoning analysis for the FAR is, it's over base FAR, which requires a bonus. It's within the base amount for residential density, and the building height is consistent with a maximum of 30 feet. So because this is an RM district, bonus points are not required. The required findings for exceeding base FAR is neighborhood compatibility, and the design minimizes the appearance of driveways, parking spaces, and garage doors from public right-of-way. So for automobile parking, the estimated demand is three spaces, and applicant is proposing three covered spaces. The location of the parking is along Peabody Lane, as we've discussed, and it's compatible with the design guidelines because the parking has the least visual impact on Ocean Avenue, which is a public street, and it retains 100% active non-parking-related uses along Ocean Avenue. For bicycle parking, one long-term space per unit is required, and applicant has proposed hanging bicycle racks in each garage to accommodate that, as well as two bicycle racks near the common open space with capacity for four bicycles. For setbacks, the side and front requirements are exceeded. For the front setback, the building meets requirements of the setback equal to the average of the front setbacks on adjacent lots, and the trash enclosure is not allowed in the front setback without the conditional use permit that I mentioned before. For the rear setback, similar situation. Garages in the rear setback that are more than 10 feet in height or more than 20 feet in parallel dimension to the lot line require a conditional use permit, so that is part of your review tonight. For the trash enclosure in the front setback, we kind of went over this a little bit before, but waste management is not able to provide service to Peabody Lane, so it necessitates the Ocean Avenue pickup. And the trash enclosure will include locks addressing neighbor concerns about trash security. It maximizes usable open space by being located in close proximity to the sidewalk, and Public Works has reviewed the proposed plans for adequate sizing and appropriate location. For the garages in the rear setback along Peabody Lane, there were concerns about consistency with neighborhood design when it came last time. So Peabody Lane has nine properties that have frontage on both Ocean and Peabody. Two of those properties are vacant, and that, in this picture, are the little gaps between those little green marks. Five of the nine properties have garages in the rear setback adjacent to Peabody Lane, and all of them are very close to Peabody Lane, and those are indicated by the green marks. And you'll see that there's six of them, because one of those properties, this one right here, is under construction and received a variance to construct a garage and dwelling unit in the setback adjacent to Peabody Lane. So creating parking access to via Ocean is inconsistent with the existing development pattern. Creating parking access on Peabody Lane is consistent with the existing development pattern. And here are photos of those existing garages along Peabody Lane, and you can see they're in very close proximity to the actual road. For open space, all open space requirements are exceeded. What's required for common open space is 80 square feet. What's proposed is over 100. For private open space, the applicant's only required to provide 40 square feet minimum for each unit. They have over 100 square feet for each unit. For landscaping, at least 10% of the site area must be landscaped, and they exceed the landscaping requirement for this as well. For the North Hollis Overlay, building massing and treatment is supposed to be scaled and treated in a way that is compatible with adjacent existing structures and projects east of Doyle Street and south of Ocean Avenue. The predominant fabric of single-family homes and duplexes should be respected. The new development should provide horizontal and vertical articulation. This project does that. It has sloping roofs, and it complements the traditional building materials with wood and the use of the structure. And here's the proposed Peabody Lane elevation that we just discussed. And for Peabody Lane access, there needs to be 24 feet between the opening of the garage and the area the driver has room to back up in, and the applicant has demonstrated there's a minimum of 24 feet at the closest distance. This is a parking plan. The dark green indicates the vehicle parking. The light green, which is a little bit hard to see on this screen, indicates where the bicycles can be hung in the garages, and that would be for long-term bicycle parking for residents. Short-term bicycle parking, which is for guests, is located, as I mentioned, closer to Ocean Avenue between the trash and the common open space. And here's a zoom in in that area showing the bicycle meeting all dimensional requirements. And there's also a slight elevation change as well, so it provides additional element of buffering there. And here is that landscaping plan. We showed the comparison before. This is a little bit bigger. The common open space for, or pardon me, the common open spaces to the bottom of the screen at the front of Ocean, and private open space is on the other side of the pathway to the front unit. And the other two units are accessed by a pathway along the west side of the property. And here is the open space plan, showing open space that I mentioned beforehand on, along Ocean, but also the patio for the raised roof decks for the other units. The first floor plans all have common areas on the first floor for each unit. The second floor plans have bedrooms, and the third floor plans for the rear two units have open space as well as master suites. And as I mentioned earlier, there is not required to be family-friendly projects, but the applicant did go and take that step, knowing that that's an important feature for this community. And so just walking through that, each floor, the applicant has indicated which aspects are family-friendly with green circles that correspond to our design guidelines. So for conditional use permit findings, the proposed use is consistent with the general plan. The characters and design of the proposed use are compatible with the neighborhood, and the proposed use is compatible with utilities and emergency response systems available in the area. The proposed use contributes to the general well-being of the community by providing needed housing that is consistent with the planning regulations and the North Hollis Design Guidelines, and the proposed use complies with the planning regulations. For the development bonus in the RM, the proposed use project is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and scale, form, and materials. As we discussed, the project does step back from both Peabody Lane and Ocean Avenue. The building has gabled roofs, and the project has been designed in response to neighborhood and Planning Commission feedback. The proposed project is designed to minimize the appearance of off-street parking by not having any off-street parking accessible from Ocean, only from Peabody. And the demolition of residential units, for findings of that, the applicant will provide at least the same number of dwelling units as the demolished structure. We're going from one to three on this property, and the replacement structure would feature design quality that is as high as, or is higher than, the structure to be demolished. And the proposed Ocean View Townhomes project does do this and exudes the landscaping and bicycle parking standards and is compatible with the neighborhood character. Additionally, the elimination of the residential structure would not be materially detrimental, it's hard for me to say, and provides new homeownership opportunities in multi-bedroom, family-friendly units in a community that has a high number of studio and one-bedroom rental units. The major design review findings are that it's consistent with the general plan, that the design of the project conforms to the Emeryville Design Guidelines, and that the project is of a high design quality, is compatible with, and will not adversely affect the surrounding area. The recommendation of both the Planning Commission and staff is the City Council adopt the resolution approving the Ocean View Townhomes project. I'm available for questions, and as I mentioned before, the applicant would also like to address.
Thank you. Let's take the presentation from the applicant before questions. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you for reviewing our project. My name is Kristen Personette, and I'm the author of the plans from Indigo Design Group. I have very little to add, as Navarre is a very thorough presenter, but I did want to bring up the last remaining comments that I feel like need to be addressed from our last meeting when we last reviewed this project. The primary concerns that I heard from staff, as well as the public, and from your review, is that you were concerned about the characteristics of Peabody Lane being met in this design. As Navarre mentioned, we surveyed the nine houses along Peabody Lane. While she did mention some of the characteristics of Peabody Lane, our vicinity study yielded further results. Five of the nine have garages, as she mentioned, along Peabody Lane, similar to our proposal. Eight of the nine are multi-storied, so it is not dissimilar for us to also have a multi-story project. Eight of the nine are also multi-unit, similar to our project, and nine of the nine have vehicular access. While they may not have garages, they do have vehicular access off of Peabody Lane. So I wanted to clarify that, as I think there were some concerns about the characteristics associated with Peabody Lane relative to our project design in our last review. Secondly, I wanted to briefly discuss the concerns of the public during this last meeting of the demolition of the existing residential structure. As Navar spoke to, we are looking at relocating the structure to our very kind neighbor's lot, which is somewhat adjacent to this parcel that occupies a now vacant parcel for a home that was recently demolished due to blight. And the owners, my clients, are privately working out a possible relocation of that dwelling unit with him in a neighborly fashion. We are not allowed to include this, I was told, in our formal application, because it's outside of the purview of the Council and the Planning Commission, but we did want to address that, because that did come as a concern from the public during our last review, that we were demolishing this perfectly good existing single-family home to increase density and do new construction. So we are, we did hear that, and we are working on a possible solution for the relocation of that house. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll open it for questions first, just for clarifying purposes from members before we take public comment. Member Donahue, do you have any questions?
No.
Member Martinez?
Vice Mayor Medina?
Member Pats? Okay, at this time, you may have a seat, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing. This is a public hearing, and members of the public are afforded three minutes to speak. Madam Clerk, the time is 8:19. The public hearing is open.
Okay, first I'd like to say I got up moments ago to go out into the link to get the document, came back, and a staff member took my seat and wouldn't give it up. So that's not very nice. So a warning to the citizens, don't leave your seat. It could be taken by a staff member. Okay. So this building at 1270 Ocean Avenue, they're asking to tear down yet another single-family detached residence. It's in the zone of stability. As I've said many times, the zone of stability, the word stability means don't demolish. Doesn't mean it's impossible, but it means with extenuating circumstances, unless there's extenuating circumstances, you should not demolish the building. Studies have shown, many studies have shown, that detached single-family residences with a backyard, that those are the most family-friendly types of housing. And if you don't believe me, ask anybody that gets a family in Emeryville and flees to the suburbs, because that's what the suburbs are chock-a-block with, detached, single-family residents with backyards. Now, to those that think that we need to increase our density, let me remind you, ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments, has said that Emeryville has 200, more than 200% of recommended market rate housing. So this would boost that 200%. We don't need more density vis-à-vis market rate housing. So what we do need are detached, single-family residences with backyards, because that's actually family-friendly rather than fake family-friendly. So that's what you're doing. You're replacing actual family-friendly with fake. Now on to the trees really quickly. Tonight, something was said that was not true. Navarre said something was not true. The Arboretum's report says, quote, "The eastern tree," there's two trees that are gonna be removed. "The eastern tree is recommended for removal so that the site can be properly prepared and replacement trees can thrive," but it also said that the eastern tree has, is healthy, and the structure is fair. So Navarre just indicated that the trees are not, both trees are not healthy. Only the western tree is not healthy, according to the Arboretum. So that was stated here tonight, and let me tell you right now, the Arboretum does not agree with what the staff member said. But going back to the sentence right here, the eastern tree, this is from the Arboretum's report, "The eastern tree is recommended for removal so the site can be prepared properly and replacement trees can thrive." The UFO, the Urban Forestry Ordinance, does not provide for that. The Urban Forestry Ordinance does not provide for removing trees to get better quality soils, just so you know that. As a matter of fact, it protects trees from being cut down for that and a host of other reasons. So this runs counter to the UFO. I understand the Planning Commission already said to cut them down.
Thank you for your public comment. Your time is up.
And you can't vote on that here tonight.
Other members of the public who wish to speak at the public hearing on this item may be afforded three minutes to do so. Any members wishing to speak? Seeing and hearing none. Madam Clerk, the time is 8:23. The public hearing is closed. I'll bring it back for discussion. Begin with Member Donahue.
This looks good to me. The mention of the one healthy tree, you know, that has some meaning to it, if that's true, even though, you know, the Planning Commission approved this, so I'm not compelled to want to change anything, really, but older trees are nice. compelled to want to change anything, really, but older trees are nice to have.
Okay, thank you. Member Martinez.
I think this project has experienced many positive changes, and the owners and developers have been very responsive to the community as well to the planning commission and the council, so I will be supporting this.
Vice Mayor Medina.
I just looked at the Arborist report, and in recommendations, it actually does recommend to move both the eastern and western trees under recommendations for this report, just to answer your question there. I think that there have been a lot of positive changes to this. I like this design. I just want to make a couple of notes. Bike parking in garages is notoriously unsecure. People do not lock their bikes in their garages, so, and it's really easy to pop open garage doors. That's actually one of the primary way bikes get stolen, so I just urge maybe some reconsideration on that. And can I see this board real quick? One thing I noticed is, in the staff report that was sent to us, the color green actually shows up. This says green passeo verde on it, but it does not look green at all to me, so I would urge an actual green. A lot of new developments are shades of brown in Emeryville. I urge color.
Member Pats.
You know, I don't know. I feel like Yogi Berra on this one. It's déjà vu all over.
Do you use the microphone?
Yes, I can. You know, I have, I have nothing on this. I don't love destroying perfectly good houses, so I'm good.
Okay, I have no comments to add, other than I noticed that between the last design iteration and this one, you removed the pedestrian doors from the garages. There's no entry into the garage, other than the garage door. It's not going to keep me from voting for this project, but I think that's a poor design element. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Member Donahue and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve the resolution. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
No.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. The resolution is approved, and we're done with the public hearings. We're on to items in the Section 12, which is action items. The first item is 12.1, which is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville ordering the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Emeryville a measure to approve a business license tax. Actually, you know what? Is this a resolution or an ordinance? I don't need a read-by-title only, right?
This is a resolution, so now you don't need.
I can skip that whole thing.
That's correct.
So this is, we're on to cannabis tax. Susan.
Good evening, mayor and council members. At the last meeting, the city council directed staff to develop a cannabis tax measure with a maximum tax rate of 6% based on gross receipts. Staff has prepared a measure reflecting your direction. There's no sense that they afford this measure, and the estimated annual revenue is $2 million. Different tax rates can be set for different segments of the cannabis industry. Staff prepared three versions of the ordinance for your consideration. I will provide an overview about the three options, and Michael will discuss the ballot question and the election process. Option number one, the city council would establish tax rates with a simple majority vote. Raising or lowering tax rates will require a simple majority vote. Option number two, the city council would establish the initial tax rates with a simple majority vote, and the tax rates would remain in effect for five years or a different period set by the city council. Raising or lowering tax rates would require a supermajority vote. Option number three is similar to option number two. The city council would establish tax rates with a simple majority vote, and the tax rates would remain in effect for five years or a different period set by the city council. Raising tax rates would require a supermajority vote, and lowering tax rates would require a simple majority vote. Does the city council have any questions about these options?
Are there questions about the options? No.
Now, I will turn it over to Michael to discuss the ballot question.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. So for you, on your screen is the proposed ballot question. This, excuse me, thank you. The question is based on the polling question, which, which was presented to the council at, at the last meeting. One of the questions that I will be asking you at the end of the presentation is if you have any comments or any edits to the ballot question, keeping in mind that the ballot question has to remain within the 75-word limit required by the Elections Code. So let me move on to the resolution, which you're being asked to approve tonight. This is a summary of what the actions are that you're being asked to approve. The required action is the first bullet point, which is placing the ordinance on the November ballot. The other three main bullet points are optional items, which are outlined in your staff report. I'm just going to touch, touch on them really quickly in the next couple of slides. So authoring the ballot measure, authorizing and authoring the ballot measure and the rebuttal. Both of these, as I said, are optional items. The staff report, or the resolution is currently written, contemplates that the city council would wish to author a single-ballot argument, and that would have priority in the printing of the voter's pamphlet. The deadlines and the word counts for the argument and the rebuttal are shown on the Another optional item is the city attorney's impartial analysis that discusses the effects of the law, of the proposed measure on the existing law and also the operation of the measure. That would be written by me. Again, an optional item if you so choose tonight. On the optional items, if you choose to not do any of those actions, we would need to adjust the title of the resolution and the various whereas clause, or resolve clauses in the actual resolution itself, as discussed in the staff report. Here's the calendar from tonight to Election Day. Assuming that you authorize the resolution tonight, then we would go and submit the resolution package to the county ROV by the August 10th deadline. At that point, the transition of the campaign to a privately-funded volunteer advocacy group would take place. The other deadlines are noted, and then November 6 is Election Day. So here are the questions that staff would like the council to answer tonight. Does the ordinance reflect your direction regarding the tax rate and the ability to attack various segments of the cannabis industry? Which version of the ordinance would the council like to adopt in order to put in front of the voters? Does the council have any comments on the ballot question itself? And then finally, do you wish to authorize and author the ballot argument and rebuttal and allow for a city attorney impartial analysis? I believe that is it. I just want to give a nod. By the way, this is a lot of data to put in front of you in a short period of time. It really was a team effort, and so I'd really like to acknowledge the city clerk's office, the finance department, EDH, and the city manager's office. So that's the conclusion of my report. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Do members have questions?
I have one question.
Member Martinez.
So, Mr. Guina, what does it look like if we authorize an argument and rebuttal on the ballot and nobody submits a rebuttal?
That's, that's fine. Then the voter's pamphlet just shows what was actually submitted.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question, which is mostly procedural for you, and then I have one for Susan. The procedural question is, this is appearing before us as a resolution.
That's right.
So it only requires one reading to be adopted.
That's correct.
When we did the housing bond, we put an ordinance, and we had to do two readings for the ballot measure, and I'm trying to understand, both of these are ordinances, why we're only reading this once.
So this is a resolution. You're correct. This is a resolution. The housing bond was an ordinance, and that's because the Elections Code provides that for putting a measure, a tax measure, in front of the voters, you can do it either by resolution or by ordinance. For efficiency's sake, we thought that we would bring just a resolution, and so that's the purpose. The government code does require that you do a bond adoption by ordinance.
Okay, so the bond, we had no option, but for a general tax measure like this, we can do this by resolution, so we're not required to have a second reading.
That's correct.
Okay, that was my procedural question.
One other note to that, the, as noted in the staff report, this resolution must be adopted by a four-fifths vote of the council tonight.
Thank you for that. Susan, I have one question for you before we take public comment. It's just about the estimated tax revenue of $2 million. Given that we're, we haven't set a tax rate, how are you reaching $2 million?
We actually make a conservative estimate and not using 6%. It's a lower rate. And in the staff report, we, we described that, actually, the estimate is about 2.3 million, but for the ballot question, we use 2 million just to round it up.
And so you're basing it on a 2% or a 3% rate?
Um, chat.
Chat.
Yeah.
Yes.
First, it's important to note, that's an estimate.
You touch it, you break it.
I've noticed that everyone's.
Everybody's broken it so far. Okay.
Precarious. And it's, it is an estimate, so with that caveat, it's based on, and it is conservative, because it's based only on the estimated gross receipts of our existing cannabis businesses once they get to full operation.
Okay.
So it doesn't include potential future additional businesses, which there is extraordinarily high demand in, in manufacturing, distribution, testing. Everyone's looking for space. And so we took a 5% rate, applied it to the, the gross receipts of our existing businesses, and put that as the, as the number, as the estimate.
So that's not, I don't take that as superconservative, but it's 5%.
That's right.
Okay. Ally.
And the way in which you calculated this expectation, I am hoping it's more conservatively than how the state calculated their expectation of sales tax.
Yes, because for us, we're looking at folks that are actually here.
Okay.
And the state was, had necessarily was estimating based on the size of the market.
They were 80% off, so just want to make sure we're more accurate.
Okay, are there other questions? At this time, I'll open this item for public comment. Members of the public who wish to speak have up to three minutes to do so. You may approach the podium now. Oh, actually, you know what? I apologize. There is a speaker card for this before I call for general members of the public. Mr. Freund, do you have a speaker card? Would you like to speak first? And for those who are here for parking, there are speaker cards at the front desk there. If you would like to be able to be called to speak, you can pull out a speaker card and give it to the clerk.
Okay, I'll try not to touch this. My name is Ron Freund from West Emeryville. First, in the interest of full transparency, I will confess that even though I don't use this product today, I did indulge, like all good college students, at the time. But like our former president, William Clinton, I did not inhale, so. In general, I strongly support the idea of taxing and regulating cannabis as we do with alcohol and tobacco. My only concern is with the methodology of this, or of this resolution, or how it will appear on the ballot. It seems to grant a wide discretionary authority to the council within this cap. It allows you to set a rate that could be anywhere from .001 to .599, or 5.99, or 6%, which is a very broad range. What is going on over there?
They're filling out public comment. Your time is running.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I'm dubbing this cap and change. So I'd like to know, how common is this, to have such discretion with respect to tax, even though there's a cap on it? How have, how have the other cities proceeded with regard to this? Is it correct to say the initial tax rate could be anywhere from 1 to 6%? And like Mayor Bowders, I am concerned with putting the revenue at $2 million in the actual language of the ballot. In case we don't raise that much, it will disappoint a lot of voters, and I would be concerned with this. As a precedent, I hope Michael will address this during your discussion. If you could ask him to do so, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Mr. Donahue.
Yeah, first, I'd like to remind the mayor, the Brown Act, you know, talks about accessibility for citizens to the government, and so if you make a rule for one, you got to make a rule for all. So you, last time I spoke, you interrupted me. You didn't let me finish a sentence after my three minutes were up, and you've let other people finish their sentences that they're in the middle of. And so if you do that, extend that courtesy to others, you have to extend it to everybody, just so the mayor knows. Now regarding the marijuana resolution, if you're looking to increase revenue here in Emeryville, what I think you should do is get rid of the business tax cap. This is a thing that's been in existence for many years in Emeryville. It means that the biggest businesses pay at a lower rate than the smallest businesses. So for instance, I pay at a much higher, I have a small business in Emeryville, and I pay my taxes at a much higher rate than, say, Pixar does. And that's been in effect for many years, and so I think you should rescind the business tax cap if you're looking for revenue. Second, with regards, with specificity to marijuana, marijuana, pardon me, has been illegal in California from 1849 until this year, and so there, maybe not. Okay, it was made, it's been illegal for several generations. And there's a large black market that's built up. And so by overtaxing, you're going to drive users to their old ways of buying it, to be tax-free, and we don't want that. So I think if you want to tax this product more than other products, which is, sounds like this is going to do, you should wait a while until the old, until there's a stasis is reached and the old black market starts to shrivel up and go away, and then maybe you could increase the taxes a little bit. I don't, I think it's ill-advised to do it so soon after legalizing marijuana, and I just think it's going to backfire, and people are going to go, use the black market. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Only once? Okay. You don't, are you on this item? 12, yeah, you can come up right now.
Yeah, sorry.
It's okay.
My first time here.
No worries.
Welcome.
Welcome to the city hall.
Thank you. I'm Chelsea Miles. I work for Kikoko, and I also am a public accountant and have my own practice. And I do want to talk about this, I think, right now, as a gentleman said before, it might be a little too soon as the market kind of settles to be taxing these businesses. Right now, the state of the industry, a lot of manufacturing companies had to take a lot of returns back. So I think the estimate for the, was it, 39 million of revenue, I think, was really, really high for seven entities. I've been, that was what the, the, the generate of the $2.3 million taxation that Emeryville would receive. I would think that would be a really high estimate, based on my years of experience, and I've only had two years in cannabis, but that's kind of where the public accounting market has been agreeable to work in it, this space. So I would consider, or request that you look at a lower rate of maybe, you know, 1% to 2%. Definitely not 5, just because of the way that the taxes are already produced for 280E. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the federal income taxation and how that is calculated, but these businesses are taxed very heavily, and a lot of their selling activities, well, all of it, is not deductible for federal taxes. So I think if you want to bring in more clients, or more, excuse me, more companies here in Emeryville, which is, is great, I would say maybe hold off for a couple of years or make it at least a lower rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, the public comment is closed. Members, we have five questions before us from the, from the staff. We'll go through those questions in order. The first question, does the ordinance reflect council's direction regarding tax rate taxing segments of the industry? Is there general consensus yes, or is there question or debate? I'm seeing yes on the left. Is there yes on the right?
Yes.
Yes, so the ordinance reflects the council's direction regarding the tax rate. And just as clarification for our last speaker, this is a maximum tax rate. We're not setting the tax rate here to Mr. Freund's point. We'll discuss in a moment, probably. Which version of the ordinance do folks like, between one, two, and three? Member Martinez.
I am supportive of the first version of the ordinance, which requires a simple majority to set the tax rate, and then changes can be made by a simple majority, because the other two ordinances do set an amount of time that the rate would be effective, and I think it's, for this industry... I think it's, for this industry, I think it's wise that city council and the city be nimble with changes that we need to make. If we need to lower tax rate or raise a tax rate in line with the market, hand in hand with our businesses, I think we need to be able to do that quickly.
Thank you. Member Donahue?
I agree with Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. Member Medina?
I also agree, and I feel like it is responsible for us to not hold, like, any future elected officials to this council to a different standard than ourselves.
Member Pats?
With Ally's out on, I agree.
Okay, my only question is, just as, by not, I agree with Councilmember Martinez completely, but I just want to do a quick legal check on one item related to this. By not, how is the best way to word this? The ability to set in a future ordinance, so we're going to, we can set the rate, but could we also, in the future, does the way that this ballot measure is written, does it also allow us to set the period of time for which those rates are in place? You see what I'm asking? So there's the ability in the draft, option one says, we can set the rate as a council, which we're flexibly trying to do. The other options had this prescribed period of time, and you had asked on those slides, do we want to change the period of time? And we don't want to do that tonight, but my question is, does the ballot measure we're creating, does it authorize us to set a period of time for those rates, or do we not get to set the time, we just literally have to come back and adjust the rate?
So if I'm understanding you correctly, a possible future resolution would be to set the tax rate for a particular business sector at 3% for a period of five years?
Yeah, so just assume any percent, we say this industry should have a 3% rate, using your example, and we want to give predictability to that segment of the industry, and we say that that rate will remain unchanged as it's in place by resolution or ordinance that we've adopted for a period of three to five years.
Sure, and then what I would say to that, the answer, the answer is yes, but what I would also say is that you, at the end of that three years, that resolution would also say, you would have to sort of provide for what happens.
It either continues, or it gives us the opportunity to change it, we say.
Right, but yes.
Okay, so it's, we can, we can flexibly do that.
You have, you have that flexibility, yes.
I like that. So we can offer predictability.
We can offer it if we need to, when we get to that discussion point. Okay, so.
And on that real quick, on that same point, I'm sorry, but let's say we, we set it and say this is set for three years, given that it's not in the ballot measure, we would still be able, as a council, to come back and change it and undo our own resolution.
Yeah, yes, I mean, the, the way this.
So it doesn't matter, that was my point.
Yeah, to his point, it doesn't matter, then.
Yeah.
Okay, so I hear unanimous consent with option one. Okay, option one has been decided. Does the council have comments on the ballot question? Are there any comments on the ballot question?
I have a question, if staff can recall, was $2 million on, in the polling? Do you remember, Chad? Okay, thank you.
My question is, do we need to say that?
Yes, the ballot, the elections code provides that for a tax measure, that you have to provide in the ballot question what the anticipated or an estimate of the revenues would be.
Okay. Does everyone okay with the ballot question?
Good job.
Yes.
Yes, okay, yes, we agree with the ballot question. Does the council wish to authorize and author the ballot argument and rebuttal? So as context, when we did the housing bond, this goes to the privately financed campaign, and so as the chair of that campaign, I wrote the ballot argument for, there was no argument against, there was no rebuttal, but we would essentially be authorizing it as a council, so we would approve it. Is that correct?
That's correct. So there are, so the council has the ability to author a ballot argument, and then whatever other volunteer campaign group also has the ability to author.
I see.
A ballot argument. And if those two things were to happen, the council's argument would appear first in the priority list on the printing, and then any, any other one would come after the councils.
If the council chooses to argue it, are the council members, the five signatories to it?
Yes, that's correct. And so as, I mentioned this in the staff report, you can, if the council wishes to author a ballot, you can do it two ways. You can come back on your August 3 meeting and hammer it out there, or you can authorize two members, up to two members of yourselves, to go and work on it, and then come back and, at your August 3 meeting and adopt that, and then that would be your ballot, that would be the council ballot.
Okay, so the threshold question first is, do people want to do an argument and prepare and authorize for the council to the argument and rebuttal?
Yes.
Yes, I'm hearing yes. What do you think?
I'm, I'm positive for that, but I just wanted to let council know I will be out of state from the 27th to the 3rd, so I cannot serve on.
We're going to nominate you.
Committee.
Okay, so, but are you supportive of us doing it?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so the secondary question is, how would we like to do it? Is there two people who would like to be on the committee to do that? You want to do it?
I'll do it with you.
Okay, is everyone okay with that?
That sounds great.
Yeah, okay, so the mayor and vice mayor will serve on the committee to create the ballot argument in favor of the proposition. Does the council wish for the city attorney's impartial analysis? I have a question, is this the tax statement, or is this the legal analysis?
This is, this is different from the tax statement. There is no tax statement on this. That tax statement was required for the bond measure.
For parcel matters.
But this is not required for a tax measure. This is simply a, as I said, an impartial analysis, effect of the measure on existing law.
Okay, because my question is whether the impartial analysis can, can provide information about how the proposed general revenue estimate has been reached. Is that something you can include in your impartial analysis, or are you simply analyzing what it applies to?
It's, what it applies to, how would have, how, how if any, it would affect city operations, existing operations, that sort of thing.
What are the, what's the prerogative of council? Have the impartial analysis?
How long would it take you to crank it out?
My internal deadline would be August.
Not when, but I meant.
No, how much time do you need, is what he's asking you? And do you, do you need a day to do it, 10 days to do it?
You can do it in sixths of an hour if you need to.
Thank you. You know, I mean, like I said.
That was the most unsincere thank you ever.
Pretty close. I mean, I'll say that I am going to take, you know, I would take up to my deadline to do it, and I'll just note that the impartial analysis, if you're authorizing it, does not need to be approved by the council. So there's no further action that the council needs to take after tonight if you authorize it.
Okay, how do people feel?
I don't think it's a good use of Michael's time.
You don't?
I don't think it changes the ballot measure.
I personally, doing ballot measures, feel that always having an impartial analysis is helpful to people who want to know, because they see the city council, and they say, well, you want us to do this, and then they see the city attorney and say, well, he's the lawyer, he's the no fun zone, yeah.
Yeah, that's what everyone thinks.
You guys read ballot measures very differently.
Well, we also work on them for a living in our full-time job.
We read all of them.
We read all of them.
I know.
How do you guys feel?
I would like for the impartial analysis.
You would like one?
The experts rule.
Okay, you would like one?
Sorry, Michael.
Okay, the majority decision is to require that you do an impartial analysis for the city, please. Are there other questions that staff have for council in order to move this forward? You have all the answers you need, Susan? Michael?
I have everything I need, thank you.
Chad? Chad says maybe.
Actually, yes, just to clarify, you're also authorizing the rebuttal as well.
We are authorizing the rebuttal, should someone choose to file a reply argument, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that should be sufficient direction, then?
That's correct.
Okay, so that will, oh, you know what?
We're not moving the resolution.
We need to.
Yeah, we do, but hold on one second. I want to address, if council will hear me, I want to address one question from the public, Mr. Freund's question about the cap discretion issue. Yes, you're correct that it's giving us the space. At the last meeting, we had a very sufficient debate on this issue, and the reality is that different segments of the cannabis industry are at different levels of maturity, we should say, and that one of the reasons products are being returned and not making it to store shelves, and manufacturers are having a hard time turning a profit, which in turn benefits the city, is because there's an insufficient number of testing and research companies right now. And so there's a reason to differentiate the rate for that type of business versus one that might be operating a dispensary. Because it was very fact-laden and heavy, we decided that the prudent thing to do was to give it more time, but because there, the county has deadlines for filing election measures, the way to do this was to put a cap rate, as we're doing, at 6%, which I would note, most cities, to the other question that was asked, do have cap rates, and they don't reach them, some of them do, but many don't. But rather than have a one-size-fits-all for the entire industry, we're going to have a more thoughtful discussion between now and November about what those rates look like for the segments of the industry, so that we can enact an ordinance that reflects that. Does that sound like I captured it correctly, council?
And can I, can I answer another part of his question? So the majority of the cities surrounding us have a cap rate at 10%?
Some at 15.
And in answer to the question, do they exercise the ability to, to move that rate around? They sure do. Berkeley just recently went down from 10 to 5 in, once they figured out the impact of the compounded state taxes on businesses.
I hope I have adequately answered your question. You're welcome. Okay, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion on the resolution.
Come with the resolution, I'll second.
I have a motion from Member Martinez, and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item 12.2 is a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville, adopting the Emeryville Parking Management Plan. Hi.
Good evening. Amber Evans, Community Development Coordinator with the city. Happy to bring back to you tonight, after your study session on June 19th, a final draft implementation for the parking management plan. I'm just going to go through some of the major changes that were discussed at the study session last month, which really were around phasing and both the permitting programs for businesses and residences. And then I'm going to throw up the map that's been revised from the last plan, that really reflects the geography of changes, and we can talk about the final plan, does that reflect what your intentions were last time, before we go into the discussion of that. I would like to call attention to the fact that one thing has been added in this process, which was the, the final plan, as it's brought to you tonight, was brought to the EDAC, or the Economic Development Advisory Committee, and they did unanimously endorse the principles of the plan, as well as making a statement that they'd like to city, see the city look at ways of maintaining and possibly expanding the supply of parking to support economic development. Where we are in this process puts you now at my seeking final approval of the plan, and I'll go through the following steps at the end of this presentation. Needs to put a green box around that before we move on. Phase one got significantly changed at your study session in terms of us moving forward with the triangle, or short-term meters on San Pablo Avenue and Adeline, and residential and business permit programs in North Hollis, the triangle, and reverse triangle, or what is south of West MacArthur, as well as a request for a study of the peak hour transit-only lanes on Hollis Avenue. So we had been moving forward with North Hollis and the Doyle areas, the one sub-pilot area, and we now have those two different areas, and I'll go through the geography of them now. And this map is a new map in the final plan, and these are segments pulled out, that really try and clarify who's eligible for these permit areas, because there has been some confusion, such as if a resident lives on a block that has meters in front of it, can they be eligible for a residential permit? As long as they're in that zone, that is the intention of the program as it's proposed. There are some sub-areas, such as the business area that was proposed around 67th Street, so we understood direction to include eligibility for businesses on both 66th and 67th, both sides of the street, to be eligible for those permits. And then the other area added are midterm meters on Harough, as well as under Powell Street, the underpass that had been missing from the plan prior, and we have learned that there are 58 spots there as well, some motorcycle spots in that location. The triangle, this, this map doesn't include any of the meters, so some of that blank space you're seeing is where meters would be located. But again, anyone living within this golden fish, I'd say, is into the shape that has resulted, that includes both the triangle and the area south of there, would be eligible for permits, and there will be both residential and business permits eligible here. The future phases were really clarified to be after we get the results from these two areas. We'll do, be, be doing occupancy studies, we'll be looking at the pricing and how that's affecting us, our ability to meet our goals of the plan. And we'll be monitoring the parking management performance as we go into the additional phases. Phase two is anticipated to bring meters to North Bayfront, the central Emeryville, and Park Avenue areas, with an expansion of residential and business permit programs in those same areas. Phase three, which we anticipate after the sewer infrastructure project at Watergate, would include meters on the south side and residential permits on the north side on Powell west of I-80. This slide, I'd say the biggest thing for us to really point out about is that there are some other issues, that every area has both a permit area and a meter area, but we have some other areas, issues, such as the bus lane, peak hour corridor study, and mobilizing that. As we move into the triangle, San Pablo Avenue has an intermodal corridor improvement study that will start to have a public outreach phase this fall, and that will talk about some different possibilities on San Pablo, so our parking improvements will need to interface with that. Significant loading and, and drop-off within the uses of that street. Then as we move into Park Avenue, we've heard a lot about park-and-ride transbay buses, where people are dropping off their cars coming from other areas and then getting on a transbay bus. How do we, you know, we've talked about in the plan, dealing with and having our strategies be explicit to that. And then in the peninsula, we have casual carpool. Returning to that conversation, we'll probably think about what goals does it meet, how do we support it, what isn't working, and then the fire and police, street-side parking for customers of those facilities, how does that integrate with the meters? So this is the, the full permit area proposal. It has a couple of carve-outs in the Park Avenue, adding the additional residential permit in Park Avenue, and then, of course, the Watergate. And both those residential permit areas are unique, and that's why they're dashed, in that they don't have business permits that overlay with them. So in, in the triangle and North Hollis, the, the businesses within those areas are eligible for a few of the permits, assuming that residents will be taking at least one themselves, and then the businesses are only from the additional capacity. There was a lot of discussion about price, and what was price, the prices intention to do as policy. And so here in this proposal before you, in the final plan, is something that does what we hope, we understood you wanted to do, which was with each additional car, there was a price jump, so that there wasn't sort of a capacity to just think, hey, I can park it, why not think, why think about it? Now this is kind of a conscious decision about how we use the right-of-way. And we heard about people that, where there were multiple people and single households as people look at housing costs, and so we added a third permit, and we added a process where if there's a household, like someone who emailed me today, has six individuals living in a single-family home, and they want to make an appeal, they can come to staff. Staff sees that as reasonable, that exception could be made. If it turns out they have three off-street parking spaces and nobody wants to take the time to get into it, staff might, having looked at that, deny it. If there's then conflict, only then would it go to the Public Works and Transportation Committee. Also, it should be noted that for anyone who has very low-income households, an existing part of the program that exists on three blocks today is that we provide a 50% discount on these prices for very low-income households. The business permit price, pricing had been fairly undeveloped when it came to your study session. We heard from you direction to look at both the size of the business and the percentage or the number of permits that were requested from the total employees. This is a methodology reflecting that direction. It is something that we believe that in the ordinance, if we need to fine-tune this, there is a way to do that, if we needed to add additional methodology, for example, considering the existence of off-street parking, that might be able to be done in the ordinance. So we are looking for any additional criteria that, or how you react to this initial proposal. Again, the same exception that I described for residential permits could be used as a process for business permits. a process for business permits. And so, really, um, the, I come to this as asking some basic questions about that. Have these, are these phases and milestones for each phase appropriate? Is the revised pricing and pricing and policy residential permits? And then the allocation and pricing for business permits appropriate? And are there any other policy considerations to be made in our drafting of the ordinance, which if you adopt this plan tonight, will be our next steps? There are also some specific geographic questions, and these were in your staff report. Just making sure that we had correctly reflected the direction we had gotten in the study session. There had been some ambiguity about long-term meters or midterm meters with business permits under the Powell Street Bridge. The final plan assumes midterm meters with business permits. Um, and those business permits, for purposes of the financial model, we're assuming that about 75% of the meters, we would allow business permits to be sold to. We would not sell more than that, because the model becomes financially unstable.
Citywide or just under the bridge?
Uh, citywide. That is a component of the midterm meter program.
What was the percentage again?
75%.
75%.
And, uh, so midterm meters with business permits, and again, with that caveat about the program. Also, there are motorcycle spaces there, and, uh, Member Donahue had mentioned, uh, some concern about motorcycle spaces, so in inventorying those, was there any special treatment, or would those be metered and permitted as well? And then Harough had been discussed and was, um, identified for midterm meters with business permits, but it wasn't clear direction on Horton south of Harough. There are long-term meters assumed in the plan as it is now. Um, and should short-term meters be installed on the east side of Doyle between 59th and 61st, adjacent to the north, the National Holistic Institute? Some questions had come up about this, a variety of changes were being made in that exact area. Short-term meters were not assumed in front of this location. So, these were just a few of the cleanup of that list of about 12 very specific geographic points that otherwise, we believe that in this final plan, as mapped here, we have reflected, we have reflected the community comments that have come in and asked for specific changes regarding, um, geographic balances of mixed use. And so, um, it's just those final niggling details and those broader policy questions as we move into the possible ordinance implementing this plan. And with that, I open it to your questions. Actually, I could, I'll, I'll outline these next steps. The draft and final ordinances will be multiple ordinances, one regarding the meters, and then one that covers both business and residential permits, or if we find that it makes sense to split that up, we might even do that. We will be developing technical specifications and bid documents for meters, so this is where we'll get into the specific technology. We know that we wanna use license plates with whatever technology for meters we're using, um, and installing those within our vehicles and the software needed to do this. We'll then be with those specifications bidding for the installation, collection, and maintenance. We'll then provide education and training, both for new staff hired for the program and training for the public, you know, what might be a soft opening of warnings and other, um, you know, clarifications of the pricing systems, the signage, and what can be anticipated. And then we anticipate enforcement would begin in early or mid 2019, next year. So, I can stop, I can put this map up for any discussion or go back to questions, however it might serve you.
Let's take the public comment, unless there are clarifying questions about the presentation itself. Mr. Donahue has a question.
I have, uh, sort of an overarching question about parking technology. When I look at the variety of ways that you can collect from meters, you know, individual meters for individual spots, two meters serving, on one pole, serving two spots, and then a kiosk system, and then there is just the pure number system, and you do it online. It just seems like the technology has really evolved in the last 10 years, and that the just having numbers, no infrastructure required, and maybe a future enforcement mechanism that uses geolocation, you know, this could be so cheap. Uh, or have you looked into that? It just seems like for the, for the future, and maybe the rest of our city, do we, you know, is this gonna be transformative in some way?
Um, so, we have, the, the plan currently anticipates that we will roll this out with a pay-by-phone system integrated. We have, we don't know of any other cities that are doing it solely with that technology. Berkeley and Oakland are just now, after many years, with meters adding that technology. So, we are very likely to have the same provider and an integrated system with our adjacent jurisdictions. Um, and then, but we have not anticipated, uh, not in putting in physical infrastructure, and part of that's an equity issue. What happens for someone who doesn't own a phone? Can they not park in Emeryville? What happens if somebody's battery is dead, and they, they get a ticket, and they're just frustrated by the process? So, some duality does appear, and redundancy, given the frustrations that exist around parking, um, are considered perhaps a best practice at this time. Um, we have had some conversation and, and community feedback about kiosks having fewer locations, and therefore desirable. We've also had feedback that if they malfunction, and they're far from where somebody wanted to go at their destination and far from their car, it's a hassle. So, um, the, I think there is anticipation that different areas of the city might be served by different combinations of technology, um, and that the dual head, um, give us a way to meet the grant criteria, which are for multi-space meters, um, and also reduce some of that clutter on the sidewalk that has been expressed as a concern. But that can really be addressed, um, in the RFP for the technology and how broad we write that, and then the ordinance for any, but the plan doesn't tie us to a specific technology at this time.
Mayor Bouders?
Yes, sir.
May I just elaborate a little bit on Amber's answer? Uh, yes, as she said, we're not asking you to adopt a plan that locks in any specific technology. Uh, we'll be fleshing that out later, and as this gets implemented. However, there is a specific provision of state law regarding meters that says that if you can, if you only provide, uh, for a mobile device to pay for your parking, you cannot issue citations unless you also have a way to physically pay for the parking.
What a sweet piece of legislation to tire along with that itself.
Thank you. There's no more questions?
I do actually have a question.
Sorry, I lied.
The 75% of midterm meters eligible for permits being a best practice, uh, where did we get that number from?
And I'm sorry if I, if I stated it was a best practice. I don't know, I think this is a fairly innovative approach to our mix of uses, um, and some of, was initially out of a conversation about how do we deal with areas where we have people parking because they don't wanna pay San Francisco parking rates, and we're actually setting a parking rate that's based on that decision. But then we have people locally that aren't making that decision, that need someplace to park, and that business plan, this business permit overlay came from that. So, if you worked in, in Emeryville, you could use a permit to stay there. If you work somewhere else, you were gonna have to, you were looking at a really high price, and maybe that wasn't the best decision for you. So, sort of addressing that park-and-ride problem. Um, the, the 75% was based on our consultants, and they can't answer this in more detail if needed, they are available. Um, the 75% was a number that if we just started with, what happens if we issue business permits, there's enough demand for business permits, and 100% of these are parked up by local businesses? Can this model survive that assumption? And it couldn't. We needed subsidy from, from short-term meters, we needed a more aggressive modeling assumptions. So, we went back from that to how many could we offer and still be financially solvent? And 75% was the answer to that question.
That's the maximum amount we can, okay. Thank you, that helps.
I have one question now for you, Amber. The location of short-term meters in relation to residential zones. So, the residential zones, like I look at the Triangle and the Doyle-Hollis neighborhood, and they have a two-hour limit for business permit, or for, for visitors generally, right?
For any visitor that does not have a permit.
So, are we depriving the, are we basically depriving the meters of having the opportunity to make revenue because we're gonna simply have people who go have lunch just park in a residential neighborhood? Are we worried about that? And how are we gonna adequately enforce that? Does the technology allow us to actually track that the car is there more than two hours later, so that we, you know, we issue a citation versus the person learns to go and use the meter and not park in that zone for longer than two hours?
Well, so, the license plate reading will give us analysis, depending on how many times we're driving by, which would be based on that. There is the proximity notion here. We are trying to create turnover in the most visible storefront, frontage, where we've had businesses ask for that. And if there are people willing to sort of go back into, because that's too hefty a price, that might be a balance, because we've heard the concern, this is gonna keep me from shopping because it's too expensive. Well, for that body, they can go find two-hour visitor permit, or visitor hours within the residential permits, if there's space available, and depending on how the business and residential permit basis is there, there may not be that many, although we have left, um, as in the final plan, we have left a, a few, a reasonable percentage of, of unsold permits that could be used for that kind of visitor parking within it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other final questions for clarifying for staff? Okay, at this time, we're gonna open this item for public comment. Members of the public will have three minutes to speak. I have 10 speaker cards, and I'll call you in order, and if you'd just line up behind the prior speaker so we can move along. The first is Chris Chazinski, the second will be Tracy Rosenberg, and the third will be George Martin.
Hello, good evening. My name is Chris Chazinski. I wanted to highlight what seems to be a disconnect, uh, between the use of license plate readers, LPRs, and, and adequate use policy for parking enforcement. In looking at labor cost summary, it looks like police are going to be enforcing this. I'm not sure I'm inferring that, maybe staff can clarify that. Nonetheless, LPRs are invasive to begin with, and the City of Emeryville has a use policy in accordance with SB 34 to, uh, stipulate, um, how that's to be tracked and used for law enforcement and criminal activity, but it seems to be a bit overkill if that's the intent for, uh, enforcing parking meters. I think the minimum storage requirements for law enforcement are a year, according to Emeryville's policy, and, you know, for, for a parking violation, if you're gonna be tracking license plates after, you know, every two hours.
Thank you.
Maybe it should be three months. It certainly shouldn't be a year, in my opinion. And that there doesn't seem to be much separation between, um, law enforcement, or sorry, parking enforcement and actual criminal activity laid out in, um, there's, there's no separation between how police, if they're going to be handling these LPRs, in what capacity, and when will they be using those LPRs just for parking enforcement versus actual criminal activity? So, I'd like to see a bit more clarity on that, um, and would like some comment from either of the councilmembers or, uh, the staff on, on that piece, because it seems very unclear, and there seems to be pretty good disconnect. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Rosenberg, George Martin, Kate Lucchese.
Hi, good evening. Um, Tracy Rosenberg, I'm also a privacy advocate, I'm the executive, I'm the Executive Director of Media Alliance. Um, I'm gonna cover some of the territory that my colleague already mentioned, but, um, in addition to kind of diddwing, hopefully I'll bring up one or two other points. Again, it's just about the very small part of this very large, um, parking program that you're putting forward that relates to the automated license plate readers. So, it's really a tiny portion of it, but for that particular portion, um, license plate readers have been controversial all over the Bay Area and the country, and so controversial that state law was passed in 2016, Senate Bill 34, which required, um, a transparent public policy and a public hearing. And you guys have a policy on your website, but again, it's a policy that applies to criminal use, and doesn't seem to be really relevant to what we're talking about here. Uh, retention of data for a year is really kind of overkill for parking tickets, and when you talk about sort of collection of data and storage of, of data, to use that for an analysis of your parking patterns is very different than to use it for, you know, criminal case investigation. So, I really think you have to go back to that policy and make some modifications or some changes, or do something slightly different, so it's appropriate for this kind of use and this kind of equipment. And in theory, the way that Senate Bill 34 is supposed to work is before you implement and before you purchase, you sort of get the policy up to snuff, you post it conspicuously on the website, and then you have a public hearing. So, within reason, I think it would be good maybe to kind of take a look at the process, kind of along those lines. And I'll add, as privacy advocates, we believe that process should be right for any kind of surveillance or spying equipment, and we do have a municipal ordinance that, um, a draft one, that's been put into effect in Oakland and Berkeley and some neighboring cities, and Emeryville might wanna consider that as well. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Next is George Martin, Kate Lucchese, and Madeline Covey, it looks like.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. I don't think I need to introduce the company, I think you guys know me. Before I start on my prepared statement, I just mentioned, this is coming from our little corner of the industrial area on 67th Street, and it's just our vision of the area. I don't specifically take into account the entire city, which I think is so much more important, the control that you need there, so I, I wanna preface that in my statement. I've sent you all emails voicing my opinions on this parking situation, and I'll go through some of them once again. I believe you should first and foremost enforce the existing laws in the stressed parking areas, the areas where you receive complaints. This could resolve many parking matters and reduce the scope of this issue. Those areas are not on 67th Street. Once parking is enforced in those stressed areas, study the results for this enforcement. Until you actually enforce existing laws, you are just adding layers upon layers of laws on laws. Just keep it simple. If this is not where you wanna go with this, then my next concern is the rollout. Again, focus on the stressed parking areas, not the untroubled areas like 67th Street. By suggesting this, we're trying to save the city money and efforts, where those efforts and capital can be used elsewhere in the city where it's really needed. Remember, our area is primarily an industrial area. So, once again, if you still are bound and determined to control our little corner of Emeryville, then use permits. No meters, no, on either side of the street, um, because this is, makes it much more simple, less costly, and less burdensome for enforcement. Encourage carpooling. Where multiple drivers are used, discount them. We have a problem with meters, because our hours, our working hours, don't really facilitate and makes it problematic for feeding meters if we don't use permits. Uh, and the same would be true for, um, new workers and guest workers. Lastly, I'm still not really clear as to the special handling and treatment of the west portion of 67th Street. I don't wanna put pressure on our neighbors, but they shouldn't be given special treatment because they don't have sidewalks. They are an industrial area, as is our industrial area. Thank you, and for your understanding of our concerns and our opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Kate, Madeline, and then Jordan Palau.
Hello, councilmembers. This is the first time I've, I've come here. Uh, we just moved here recently. Uh, it's an honor to come after George Martin. I do like your horn very much, um, as it happens during the day. Um, I'm Kate Lucchese, and, um, we live in a little unit on Ocean Street. I'm Kate Lucchese, and we live in a little unit on Ocean Street, Ocean Avenue, sorry. And it's, it's bound to be overlooked, and I'm sorry, this is all those tiny things. Right up there, we're on a blue chunk. So we are the only residential people on our block. Everything else is a business. We're right across from McPherson's Art Supply, and we're right next door to the kickboxing place. So our concern is that, is it possible for us to use permits on that block? Maybe on the north side? I know there's lots of parking that's like lined up parking on the other side of the street. Maybe that could be for business permits. But on our side of the street, we frequently have to move out if we have people working in our space. We do have off, off-street parking, but sometimes we do have to have some use of the street. So whether we could possibly use permits, if there's a different permit we would have, we're just a little tiny exception that this is going to be a problem, I'm afraid, if we could do north side parking. Also, I was just thinking, how many Emeryville residents actually use the parking during the day, and how many are non-Emeryville residents? In other words, if we have a permit, if I have a permit and I want to park over by Ruby's Cafe or something during the day, is there any way it could get some special, you know, benefits of being an Emeryville resident and use your sticker? I mean, that would be so cool. Just thought I'd throw that out there. Also, no, that was about it. So if we could just use stickers to give us access to metered areas, wouldn't that be cool? I mean, Emeryville's so different anyway, why not? So that's my only suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Madeline, Jordan, and then Jack Gazzoni.
Okay. Need a little sign. So I live, my name's Madeline Covey, and I have lived in Emeryville for about six years. I live on 53rd Street, and it's slated to all get meters. I live in a little area of the block that has five housing units on it, all of which are jam-packed full of people. There are six adults living in my house because it's hard to afford to live by yourself in the Bay Area, and we all have vehicles, and we all have weird schedules, and so we will all have to pay meters to park in front of our own houses during the day. And it was suggested to me that we could get permits and park other places, but if you look at that map, you have to walk two or three long blocks if you count going around corners to get to any of those permitted places from our house. It is just totally, totally untenable and ridiculous. And they said, you know, I heard there's a small possibility, maybe those five houses will be left un-metered, but then that's not enough for the number of people who live in those units. You know, my, my house has six adults, there's a big apartment complex right next to us, there's two units, there's a two-unit duplex with a person in each with only one spot, you know, one driveway. We have one driveway that barely fits one car, and then there's another big house next to the Child Development Center that has probably at least four or five adults living in it, and then two more in the back, and there's no driveway for that unit. And so, you know, like my, my landlord, who's also my housemate, was like, we're going to have to sell the house. We won't be able to live here because we won't be able to park. We won't be able to have our cars. It'll cost hundreds of dollars a month on top, you know, like, it's, it's, it's ridic, and also, that block doesn't, like, I don't know who's going to park there and pay for a meter all day because there's, like, the only business there is, is Adobe, and, you know, they laid off a bunch of people, so hardly anybody's parking on the street there anymore. It's all in the parking lot. That's only just going to be hurting people who actually live in that block and live in that area. And, you know, it's so expensive to live in the Bay Area. This is just piling on top of us just because we live in a weirdly zoned area that's both residential and commercial. It got marked up as completely commercial and completely ignored us, and I've been kind of freaking out about it all day. So please take into consideration that, you know, go, go where these things are going to go up and look at who actually parks there. Look at how many people are parking there. It's, I don't, I don't have any trouble parking on my block. It's not congested. It's fine. There's nothing wrong. I don't know what there is to fix with all of this parking planning, and it's going to, like, make living in the Bay Area that much harder, and it gets harder and harder for people. I work for a nonprofit. I help people with disabilities make art. So, like, I'm not getting paid a lot to do that, obviously, but I'd like to stay here and continue doing that, and this is, you know, going to make it that much more difficult to stay here. That's why everybody's leaving. Right. I skipped my best friend's birthday party to come to this thing, you guys.
Thank you for your comment. Jordan Palau, Jack Gazzoni, and Havaglik Landis.
I don't know if there's any real quick way of zooming in on that 53rd Street. Can't really see it, but yeah, I, I also live with Maddie. My wife is the landlord. We also have a, so we have six adults, two dogs, one 14-month-old baby. And we live in a four-person house, but we love it and it's a really great community, and it's actually, it fits us really well, except for the parking. Luckily, there are, there is currently plenty of parking on our street, and sometimes in the past, when too mobile, was too mobile, had more employees, you had to, like, find the spot on the block, but I, that was a fine sacrifice, given that I used to live in Berkeley. I don't know if anyone used to live in Berkeley and had to deal with the parking in the residential zones and the, the difficulty it was in getting a permit, particularly if you weren't in a single-family residence. And to have a tiered pricing per dwelling unit really does seem very biased financially towards dwelling units that have multiple people in, living in them. If there is some other way of finding a pricing that can be just based off of per person or, or just being able to prove that you have your car registered in Emeryville, I would be open to that. The other thing about living in Berkeley, when I was living in Berkeley, there were at least a few saving graces where there would be, you know, if a four or five blocks away, there would be a block that was unpermitted and you could park there. With this plan, it looks like there's not a single street that wouldn't be permitted or metered that, you know, if you have a friend staying over, or if you have any other situation, they're just, they're out of a lock. So I would just really strongly reconsider the, the long-term parking issues. Here's a map. Again, there's residential, it's like a residential neighborhood separate thing on the other side of the block, so they all have their own parking, but that, that's all residential on that side of the block. Our block has four units. There's the Emeryville Child Development Center, which they come and go, so there's certain times of the day that it's congested, but that's fine. They're just dropping off their kids or picking them up. That would be fine for them. It would be really silly if they have to pay a meter in order to drop their kids off or pick them up. And then there's, over here, there is a section that has Adobe and other businesses that if you want to permit them and right directly in front of them and across this, if you want to meter them and directly across the street from them, then, then go ahead. But I would also just echo that with Berkeley permitting and metering everything didn't really seem to solve their problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Gazzoni, Havaglik Landis, and Melissa Ma.
Hi, I'm Jack Gazzoni, speaking on behalf of Park Avenue Residence Committee. And in the last city council discussion on this, we expressed some concern about a lack of residential parking permit areas near the end, west end of Park Avenue, and we see that it's been expanded in what's presented tonight, and I just wanted to state that we're supportive of that, and we hope to see that expansion continue into whatever is passed. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jack. Havag, Melissa, Ruth Major.
Hi, I'm Havah. I'm another one of the six residents from the house on 53rd Street. We don't have a parking problem, but we will have one if this plan is implemented as it is. Maybe you guys want to reconsider the zoning a little bit. It would be really helpful because our block is residential. There are no meter, meter-appropriate businesses there. There are no storefronts on that street at all. The only business is Adobe, and it's not really a storefront that people come in and out of it. They do, they have a huge parking lot that they go into, so it's not appropriate to have meters along our street. It has nothing to do with the, the big commercial district along San Pablo Avenue. So just ask that you reconsider that, that little block. There's schools and families living there, and it would really negatively impact us also if it could be per resident, per actual person who has a car rather than per dwelling. I think that would help a lot of people causing us to go through, forcing us to go through a separate process to prove that we're low-income and appeal to a board, and go through this lengthy process is really hard for people who are low-income, people who have kids, people who are busy. So if we could just make it really simple, you're a person, you live here, you can prove you live here, your car's registered here, you get a permit, you can park by your house, we would all be happy. So I think it's fine to meter San Pablo in front of all the places where people go for business. Also, I just want to point out that, I don't know if you've done an analysis of environmental impact from people having to drive around more, going to look for parking that's not metered, going into those resident, those resident-permitted areas, which will be extremely impacted even if we are granted a permit for some place that's nearby. That's a really big issue, and that can really be a detriment to air quality if people have to drive around and circle and try to avoid the meter. Also, Maddie rides her bike to work every day except one day she has to drive, but if, and so she leaves her car at home on the street, and she can't do that anymore if she has to drive her car out of the, out of the meter area. So these are other environmental-type impacts that I'd like you to please consider in your plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Ma, Ruth Major, Tom Modick.
Hi, council members. Thanks for hearing us out. We were here last time and provided some feedback, and we do appreciate that you guys have made some changes to our street at 65th because it is a mixed-use. My husband Eric Mackey was the one who emailed you guys about this. So the main concern is that when there's a mixed-use street like 65th, and there's I think a couple of others that have short-term on one side and residential two-hour parking on the other side, is that people will, of course, flee to the free parking area first before they park into the metered parking area. You, Mayor, brought that up earlier with Amber, so I appreciate that comment. So I believe that it would work probably better if you made both sides the same, but still allow residential parking and business parking to be permitted from both sides. If it was either both short-term parking, I mean, short-term metered parking on both sides with residential parking allowed on those short-term meters and business parking on those meters, or make both sides two-hour and, and, and regulate that and allow the residents and the business permits also. So just to make it the same, I think you, I think it would be really good to look at that for those other streets as well because I'm sure they're going to have the same problems with, with people moving from, from the metered area to the resident, to the, to the two-hour zone. The other thing that I'd like to just bring up is the enforcement of the two-hour area. You brought that up as well. I think it is a concern because, as Amber mentioned, it's only how frequent they go around. And again, if you're, if the, if the cars are parking on the free two-hour area, they can get away with two hours, they can get away with four hours. It, it just really depends on how frequent they, the, the meter people will circu, the people who are enforcing will circulate that area. So I think that's something to keep in mind for, for, for this comment. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Melissa. Ruth Major, Tom Modick, Garrett McKinney.
Hi, I just wasn't attentive enough in the presentation, and I just wanted some clarification on the, the rates or thinking about rates for low-income. So when they say low-income, what's the range? That's very low, low to moderate? Just a little clarification for me, that's all. Thank you. Uh-oh, I've broken it again. Don't touch it.
Tom Modick, Garrett McKinney, Ken Bukowski.
Hi.
No, Tom, we had like two hours of what not to do, and it's all right, buddy, you got it, there you go. We need to fix that, staff, permanently. Thank you.
Yeah, it looks like it. I think you got to hold it. I live on 64th Street, and I can go out in the morning and watch all of our parking disappear between about 8:30 and, I don't know, 9:30 or so. And I know we want the, our residential preference of parking, but my block, just our block, has at least seven properties with no off-street parking at all, and two of them are triplexes. What I don't like about this plan, I know, I know we need residential parking, what I don't like about this plan is allowing so many commercial permits into our residential district that's going to be the same thing. They'll just buy residential permits, I mean, the permits to be in our neighborhood, and I'll go out and I'll watch all our parking disappear at the same time because we're, we're definitely one of the impacted blocks there. I think that 200 is way too many for a neighborhood which I've been told has about 600 parking spaces total. Perhaps 20 to 50 would be appropriate, perhaps for the small businesses only that have no off-street parking. And if you also, if you walk down through the neighborhood, say the parking garage behind Leap Frog, it's mostly empty. I was told by somebody they charge as much as $14 a day to park in there, and that's why they're parking in our neighborhood. And if we do this, you have this feeling that the block above Leo will be impacted also in Oakland soon as these people figure out they can park in Oakland for free. Also, I guess you want to do, read the, the license plates, but for some of us, it would make sense to have a type of, a placard or a portability for our, say, one permit for two people if we have a parking space and you need to park in front also so that we're not shuttling cars in and out and stuff like that. Okay?
Thank you. Garrett McKinney, Ken Bukowski.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. I'm here representing Safe Harbor Marinas and Emeryville Marina in specific. So I don't know if we can bring up that map again.
Can we do that for him, please?
Please. Thank you. Good to see you.
Could you stop the clock for a moment?
Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to get there.
Thank you.
Well, sorry.
Can we?
Back there, and then I'm trying to get to where you're going to talk about.
Perfect. Oh.
Can we just show the slideshow?
Sure.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, so I'm specifically going to talk about the Marina parking area on the west end of Powell Street. So I would just like to make it known that that particular parking lot that we're discussing here, zoned in orange, I believe, is split in half. So one half is Marina parking, the other half is actually city parking. And then either side, the signage is, is proper on either side. So I'd like that to make sure that's in consideration when, when discussing these zonings. And then on a Marina side of everything, it's somewhat difficult to monitor our parking lot when it is, we get one side, the, the city gets the waterfront side, and I think it would be worth proposing cutting that lot in half and doing a northern side and a southern side of that lot. So I'm not sure if that's...
When you say...
So right now, it's, it's hot dog style, so it's split right down the middle. So it's really hard for the city to monitor that from a police perspective. They have to go down the entire row and, and go around each and every car to see who's there, and it's, it hasn't been monitored. There's some issues in that parking lot in specific. And on the Marina side, it's, it's very difficult for me to either charge for parking or monitor that as well. So splitting that lot in half, I believe, in the near future, we have a growth capex project with the Marina to install gated parking with swing arms, and so you either pay to park there or you use a key fob to enter and exit, and that would kind of segregate the two and dissolve some confusion there between what's public and what's private parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Bukowski.
Good evening, council members. Here we go. Why don't I just hold it? Okay, I guess I'm really disappointed to see us taking this step. We're changing...
Can you put the foam on it? Because the, not putting the foam on it makes it raspy.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're, we're changing the look and feel of the city. This is the only oasis you can come to where you don't have to look over your back, you know, every hour. And you're creating a new level of tension for people that doesn't now exist, so I don't know how serious the problem really is. The other problem I have is we approve major developments and they have parking requirements. So they couldn't get approval if they didn't put the parking in the project, but then they don't use it for the project. Like Wareham, for example, they reached out, well, they're parking, it's available to the public. Whether they use it for the building or not, as it was approved, doesn't matter, and that's something the city needs to take a look at. The biggest problem we have is the North Hollis area, and that's where Richard Huggins has empty parking lots. He doesn't care if he only rents a third of those spaces. He'll let two of them sit there empty, and the public is losing all parking spaces. You know, the... You know, the permit program started when the residents on 62nd Street, all of a sudden they were parking across the street for years and then Mitch Robbins leased out a whole lot to somebody else and all of a sudden, one day, hundreds of people didn't have anywhere to park. He forced us to create a parking permit program for that reason. So I think we really need to look at the, the lack of, the city could make every one of those developers show how they're complying with their parking requirement. If you go to the planning commission and you say you're going to park in the building, then show us how you're going to do that. And whether or not they charge for the parking is irrelevant. We want to make sure the parking is used for the purpose which it was provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. That's the last speaker card I've received. If there are other members of the public who wish to speak on this item who did not complete a speaker card, now is your opportunity to do so. It's going once, going twice. Public comment on this item is closed. We'll bring it back for discussion. Would you like to put up the question page? I would like to, we aren't going to start with the questions. I think we'll start with some general comments.
These questions?
What was the other one?
Geography, specific details.
Let's just start, leave, there's just two pages of questions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, start with the first page and we'll just leave it up, but I'd like to begin by asking Vice Mayor Medina to provide comment.
All right, I'd like to thank everyone who came out tonight to give us input on this plan. We've gotten a lot of public input on it and we've made changes so far and I think it's a, a process that we're working on with the city. I understand this is an abrupt change for people to suddenly have a parking program that we're talking about doing. Just so you know, from my perspective, we're, this is, we are trying as much as possible to do a baby steps thing where we do lots of community engagement and very low prices for parking based on what the actual value of that land is as a public good. Progressive and good public policy dictates that you must make the best use of public land and parking by not being priced encourages driving. It encourages people to circle around looking for parking because you get congestions in certain areas of town. There are negative externalities to having free parking, incentivizes certain behavior. I think some things we need to dive into are public versus private parking spaces. I'd like to thank the Marina for bringing that up. There were a few areas in particular, the corner of 64th and Hollis, we had a little cutout that I wasn't sure why that wasn't put in, zoned either way. Hubbard between 40th and Park. You know, there were some areas that we just, and even the orange zones that Mr. Martin brought up on 67th Street having no consideration, I think we should consider those areas as well. I don't know if the first two that I mentioned are, are right of way or not, but I'd like to figure that out before we just ignore them. And the big thing that I want to talk about is technology. Councilmember Donahue kind of touched on this earlier, but we're seeing meters as a placeholder for parking technology. I think we really need to dive into and have a robust conversation about what kind of infrastructure we're putting on our streets. Is it going to be smart kiosks? Is it going to be smart meters? I've talked a little bit with Oakland's BPAC and SFMTA and gotten some feedback from them and I'm happy to continue to facilitate that conversation and connect us with those resources. But I think we need to have a really fleshed out process before we all of a sudden put in this expensive infrastructure project. I'm interested in making sure we are getting the best bang for our buck and doing something that's right for the city. And so I'll, I'll limit it to that.
Thank you. Member Pats.
I'm okay at the moment.
No comments?
No comments.
Member Donahue.
I think that all of these designs are trying to get very particular about each neighborhood. I think we should move forward, but we should be prepared to make revisions in the near future. I think we're going to have to invest some staff time or consultant time in studying what happens immediately and make, make some adjustments. I mean, I'm, like some of the, we had some compelling reasons for maybe making some changes, especially on 53rd Street to not cause harm. Or by adopting a policy, we're definitely going to be making changes. We, we won't know the effect on some of our residents that really could be devastating. But we, I think we have to consider things like placards, even though I know that this is technically challenging to do placards, some of our community just has to have that. I think our residents could better work with our plan moving forward if we give them this possibility of placards. I think this could really help. There could be some juggling that could make, make the difference for livability on, for some of our residential areas. And just in general, I think it's important that we start, we make progress on this. I think that we are, we just, we have to do something because things are not staying still. I mean, I can see in my neighborhood, things are getting even more parked out. I mean, it's just like the, things are not staying the same right now. It's a moving target and so I, I think action is required.
Thank you, Member Martinez.
I want to thank everyone who came out and spoke today. I really appreciate the comments and the input. This is an iterative process. This isn't something that we're trying to pull out of a hat. And I appreciate working with the community, community on that. And I also want to appreciate the Vice Mayor's comments on why we're doing this. We are trying to reduce driving and parking in our city and I think there are important reasons that we're trying to do that. I also, you know, I, I, just in looking at the, the updated recommendations as they map out over the city, there are still some areas that I'm concerned with. One thing that I, I have questions about are school drop-off zones as well as just the specific residential areas that people have brought up tonight. And I, I'd like to get into that more with staff when, when we have the opportunity.
Okay, thank you for that. So just a few high level comments and then we'll have a more thorough discussion on the details, I think. The two things I'd like us to discuss, I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Medina for all her work on this, I'd like to thank everyone who came out. I had the opportunity to meet about a dozen times with civic groups and businesses about this proposed plan and I have a couple of things I'd like to propose amending tonight in addition to things I know Vice Mayor Medina will, will raise. One of those two items is looking at the, the, the details of this map. I think there are benefits to making changes to some of the zones beyond what we talked about last time for the purposes of increasing the efficacy of enforcement and continuity in the neighborhood. I think if I was a visitor to parts of the North Hollis neighborhood, I would be very confused. And I heard very loud and clear from a number of different groups in the community that this is a very complicated design in certain very narrow neighborhoods. If you look at everything south of 53rd and in the triangle, it's very consistently zoned and I think we've got a little bit of a splatter map up north and I think there are ways we can make some improvements to that and I want to discuss that with my colleagues. The other thing is I want to talk about the number of business permits. And I respect the request to reduce the number of business permits. That being said, one of the things that I, I really learned in my most recent meeting with all the businesses along the Doyle Street corridor is that the vibrancy of our local economy is really dependent on finding that right balance. And so I think we need to, we need to be responsive to that. And one, so one of the proposals I'll have is to make some changes to Doyle Street in particular. But beyond that, I think we need to look carefully at the number of business permits and how we, how we allow those to be protected for small businesses that are occupying buildings that were not intended originally for commercial uses. So a lot of these old industrial buildings now sit as these big temples to small creative groups of people and they're not designed and permitted. They have pre-existing conditions that exempt them in some ways from the conditional use permits for creating new parking, which in some ways, if you think about to a couple of the commenter's points, we, we have approved development to make parking in some places. What are they doing with that parking is a fair question. I think that the other side of it is that there are a lot of small businesses, many that have been here for 20 to 40 years, that are, that turned this city over in some ways. And we need to, we need to just be really thoughtful about that. And every, it doesn't matter that we've, we first asked for staff to go look at this thing a year ago and that we've had as many study sessions as we've had and as many public outreach meetings. Every time I meet someone, they go, well, when did you decide to do this? And I'm like, we're on our 12th meeting about this probably. It doesn't matter how many times you remind folks that we've been through this iterative process for a while. The reality is that this will come as it did to the folks who came over from 53rd Street tonight. It will come as a shock to someone who's heard it for the first time. And we want to do this right. I think that that's the underlying thing and I think Councilmember Donahue's comments about being prepared to make revisions, I think that's very important. So for me, my, my priorities are the business permit numbers. I want to discuss with council some proposed changes to the map that I think will better reflect some neighborhood needs. And I would like to talk, to Ally's point about technology, I would like to talk about enforcement because as someone who's very concerned about consumer protection and privacy issues, having been a defense attorney for many years, I very much resound that sentiment. SB 34 requires us to have a public hearing to discuss the implementation of a plan. We can, we can choose to have a meeting about that before we implement this plan. And so I think that that's an appropriate, an appropriate conversation to have to comply with the law, to talk about how we will use and collect data. It doesn't need to be decided tonight. We don't need to stop what we're doing tonight to do that, but your point is very well made and I appreciate that. And so I'm going to stop my general comments there and ask staff, you have questions up, but ask staff, or actually let me ask council first, how would you prefer to go about kind of doing this? Would you prefer to discuss the map and the zoning areas first so that we kind of know what we're talking about? And then discuss the implementation issues and the details on the policy and pricing? Would that be people's preference, that order? And then the only other thing I wanted to propose, because my caucus partner on this was the Vice Mayor, is that alternatively, if we propose a number of things tonight and council wants time to think about this, I just want to express that we are not opposed to continuing this matter and not voting on this tonight if people want to think about it. Because it's more important to do this right. I think that's the signal we need to send the community. So if we want to come back to this in September for a final vote and people don't feel comfortable with all the details tonight, we think we can get through it if you want to. That's basically what we're saying. So is that a fair approach for the evening?
Yeah.
Do you think, do you think you want to try and get through it or?
Let's, let's look at the changes that we're proposing. If there are substantial changes to the map that I feel need additional consideration, I may ask for this to go to September.
That's fine. Okay, with that understanding, let's begin with the map. I'd like to ask the Vice Mayor, or do you want me to put my first item out?
Put the first one.
Okay, so we'd kind of divided this up a little bit. So if you could put the map up and zoom it in.
Yeah, I'm trying to get it on here just so you.
We've got a very negative sign here.
No maps.
No file for you.
Files, data.
No chips.
I thought it was a page. Nope.
Okay, there we go. So, thank you. If you could zoom in on the Doyle Hollis neighborhood and, oh, that's, thank you. Zoom out just a little bit.
In particular.
So the, the, the first proposal, which comes from several meetings with about 30 businesses and about 60 residents, is this substantial proposal I have. I believe that we should consider all of Doyle Street and all streets to the east of Doyle Street should be zoned in the yellow color. That all those little, the Doyle Street itself, this, since we allow two hour parking and we could, we can have long-term meters through the central core between Doyle and Hollis, it, it speaks a little bit to the character of the neighborhood because it is a single family home neighborhood and so having meters on half blocks and, and blocks is, will be a little difficult for enforcement and confusing, but it will, like the triangle and like the Park Avenue District, create a singular cohesive enforcement scheme for that neighborhood.
So is that both sides of Doyle Street?
This. So Doyle, yes, both sides of Doyle Street and then a little bit of 59th and Stanford and 61st that are blue? Nope, not that. No. Doyle. Yep, straight up Doyle, that would be all yellow and everything to the east of it between 64th and 55th would be yellow.
So including Stanford.
Would you like my map?
South.
Yes, that, that would be, that would be yellow and that would be yellow. Yes, correct. How do people feel about that?
I think that's fine.
I, I, I could see the need for those short-term meters though on that one block.
But if you're going to eat at the, the townhouse or use one of the artist's spaces over there, are you going to be there for more than two hours? And if not, can you still park on 59th Street or another block?
Well, just that one block of Doyle has got various businesses that aren't restaurants.
It's true that the business to the south of it is true. So I, I propose it that way because I, the way I'm thinking of this is that we need to simplify the map. There's all these little half blocks of blue and yellow and red. And I think that, you know, my second half of my proposal is that 62nd Street all the way across on the north side of it should just stay yellow and not split for, for five meters like that. Like we should actually just make it consistent for people to know that one side of the street between, all the way from Overland to Filejo is yellow and it's a resident and small business parking. Like we should make it easier for people to use it.
To your comment, Member Donahue, I, I, I think one of the things we're finding, that I'm finding with this, and I, and I apologize for being so quiet, I'm coming late to this having missed a meeting and a few other things, so I want, really wanted to hear you guys' input. Getting this right is more important than getting this perfect. And so to Mayor Bowder's comment there, I think having it cohesive in yellow gets it right and it's not perfect. And I, that sounds like they're, they're opposites, but it's this idea that we're going to have areas where it would make sense to have meters on that particular block.
Right.
But as you take a step back, it would make no, it, it makes it choppy. And so sometimes we're going to err on the side of cohesion and, and so I, I fully support this plan of the yellow in that zone.
How do others feel about that?
I, I support that. I, I am appreciative that you were able to meet with businesses in that area. I know that they were very concerned about how their employees would be parking, so I, I would take that to mean that they, this is, these are their wishes.
Yeah, their, their initial wish was don't do anything. We had a long conversation about why that's probably not likely to happen. But when we, you know, when we had a further conversation about who, who drives there, who's using the Pickle Works building, who's using 5515 Doyle, who, who comes there, who visits there?
And how long they're there.
How long they're there for and how they, they make it work. It, having, having greater flexibility for residents and the businesses in that area to, this is tied to my second point, which is the number of permits and whether that should vary by the neighborhood, but, but that this is a really important thing to, to get right for that particular neighborhood, I think. And so that's the first of a few small proposals I have. That's the big one, though.
I support that.
Scott, do you, how do you feel?
Well, I still think that sometimes.
Can you use the microphone?
It's, certain kinds of businesses, it's really important to have short-term meters for. Even if they're just a little section and it doesn't seem to make sense, you're driving along. Well, it does make sense for supporting certain kinds of, you know, quick turnover business. And you, you know, you're, I think that the outside world would perceive it when somebody's looking for space, oh, that's the block that has meters and I have a permit, I'm not, I'm just not parking there. You know, I, I don't, I don't see that as a problem. But I, I respect what you're saying about meeting with those businesses on Doyle Street where making it all residential and business permits in one, in that one area is, makes sense. I agree with that. But still, on that one block, we talked about last time that that, those businesses on Doyle between 59th and I guess Powell, they need some turnover.
What do you think, Ally?
I like the cohesion of it and like looking at this one block, I don't really see that immediate need for the short, I mean, it's just really the townhouse is the one that would, and I think it takes under two hours on average to eat. So unless they've specifically requested meters, which I do not believe Townhouse has, then I, I support this suggestion.
Okay, and I heard Christian say yes. So I think we have a majority to support both sides of Doyle Street, 61st to the east of Doyle Street, 59th to the east of Doyle Street and Stanford east of Doyle Street, those like single block little bits, and then the piece of Bodry Street between Powell and Stanford. And then I don't think there's any blue off the map to the bottom, no. So that, that whole rectangular neighborhood block will be zoned residential with business permit overlay. permit overlay and two-hour parking.
Yeah, it's, just to Scott's point, I was concerned about businesses like the National Holistic Institute, which has a lot of under-two-hour visitors, but those people would be able to park in the yellow zone as long as they're, you know, their appointments are usually one hour.
Yeah, Ally, go ahead. You have something?
Oh, no, no, I'm still in support of this.
Okay, so that's, that's the first piece. The second piece was the little tooth on 62nd right next to Hollis. It didn't make sense to have like five meters right there. Just make it, the little blue just below your finger there, 62nd and Hollis.
Higher, higher.
Look up to see where.
We really need a laser pointer for this.
Yes.
Yes, that little bit of blue should just become yellow and have one side of the street be the same, the same for the whole block.
Maybe mark on this. So.
I have a laser pointer if you want. Anybody got a yellow highlighter?
Yes, right here.
Yeah.
Here you go. You're welcome.
Apparently everybody did.
Tell me if I get it wrong.
Yeah, you missed the little blues on 59th.
Missed the blue on 59th. Yep, and then Bodry between Stanford and Powell. Thank you. And then the little block, half-piece of 62nd, thank you. Okay, and then the only other question I had about residential parking is in the Triangle neighborhood, which is just, why do we have meters on 41st Street east of Adeline? Is there business on 41st Street?
Oh, she does have a laser pointer.
I just got a laser pointer and a pencil.
The laser pointer is not showing for us, it's showing for you, but that's fine. That's okay, you can do that. We can see the map.
But, yes. So, 41st.
Is there, is 41st east of Adeline, it's got meters? All the other residential streets are residential. Why, is there a business on 41st Street? I'm not aware of. I thought that's Green City Lofts.
It is.
It is. So there, there has been a balance of multifamily having meters in front of it and single-family homes. We've intended, and I understand the comments we've heard, 53rd, to not have meters in front of single-family homes. But in, but in times, we've done it in front of multifamily so that as we had heard requests from Scarlet City for additional turnover, there would just be additional spaces.
Okay, so I'm, I, go ahead.
You mean on 41st though, right?
Talking about 41st, not 39th.
Yep, Scarlet City's nowhere near 41st.
But, but I just, but to your point, if you're saying Green City Lofts is parked sufficiently, Charlie, that people have off-street parking, is that?
In theory, yes.
So that's my block. I live on 41st. I live on Adeline at 41st. I can tell you where the red zone ends begins gig car parking.
Oh, that's true.
Right, that whole block.
On 41st or on Adeline?
On 41st. Adeline's all...
Oh, he's right, that's where I run.
Oh.
Yeah, that's all, like, if I need or if I'm returning a gig car, that is where we park it.
North or south side?
Uh, right on the Oakland side because you can't park them in Emeryville.
Oh.
There's a sign, and so...
Can I point out something about our, we have been considering whether or not to do an ordinance with that and how their ordinance works with Berkeley is that if you put meters, they pay you for that.
Let's leave it as meters.
That, that will be combined with the parking, the ordinance that will be part of the parking management plan.
Yes.
Leave it, so that way, in other words, if we put gig there, they'll be paying if it's a meter.
Got it. Yeah, and they like pay a lot.
Okay, so we don't have to change that. So if you could go back to the north end of the city, the other item, I'll come back to 53rd since that's a new item to discuss. It's which one?
Oh, I was gonna do...
Yeah, you do the, you're gonna do the one. I'll let Ally go next because we have a couple other items left.
Can you toss me the laser pointer? Let's just make this easy. First of all, I just wanted the power of having the laser pointer. All right, can we?
Have the power to revoke your use of it if it gets out of control.
Well, let's bring a count in the room. All right, why is this no treatment is my question?
No treatment means no sidewalk.
There's no sidewalk?
Yep.
Yeah, so that's one of the, to her earlier point about whether it's private or public parking, there's parallel parking down the street and then there's like five cars that can pull straight in. Is that because that is still city, city property, but we don't have a sidewalk? Or is that because it's owned by Wareham and that property which they own? So if you look at a Google Map view, there's like five cars that pull straight in there.
On 64th Street?
That's 64th, yeah, the south side. It's just, just up there.
Please observe the laser.
So is there curb on the...
Question to the treatment on 67th and 66th.
And then there's also this street.
A curb on the rest of that block then?
Yes.
Just not that little piece?
Yep. It's like four cars pulled straight in.
Yeah, well, that's always confusing and complicated. Often when they do that, it'll be partly in the public right-of-way and partly on the private property.
I think we need to hash that out and figure out exactly where we have our property line and not just give away free space there for charging everybody else. And same thing with this. 63rd Street.
Especially if we're open to the technology and we can put a box on the street, at the corners even, why wouldn't we? Why would we not consider putting parking restrictions on the streets? I mean, it's the same issue at 66th and 7th. Why treat one half of the street that doesn't have a sidewalk differently if we could still have people pay to be parked on the street? Is the concern that you don't know how to enforce it because there's no sidewalk?
It's installation of the improvements. Do we raise the cost of the project and do the treatment to the install sidewalks? Or do we place meters on private property if the private property is closest to the building? Then if it's at the front of that, we're on private property, so how do we?
Or we can pop a kiosk on the end where there is a sidewalk.
There is a, just...
Like, we could put the kiosk there.
Member Pats?
Just west of the, where we're talking about, the cars parking, I'm gonna call perpendicular to the street.
Yeah.
There is a little residence right there, isn't there?
Where?
I don't know.
Very end.
Of what?
Of, uh, so you've got weird, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the Google Map and there's a white building that people are registered to vote in. That's the only...
What street are you on?
64th still, sorry. Am I behind you?
Um, no.
64th is the...
We're on this little tooth of 64th.
Oh, I don't know what that is.
That's somebody's house.
Oh.
Maybe. Well, they're, yeah.
They have off-street parking.
Okay.
But I'm simply saying that sidewalk, I'd find it odd that we have no public sidewalk.
So, so to move this along, we wanted to discuss the orange zones.
And these two, yeah.
Yeah. Which two?
I'm sorry.
Yes, 66th and...
I'll use words as Scott says.
Yeah, 66th and 7th. We have a little piece on 64th and then we have 63rd. Is there any reason why we can't have, instead of having these be no, no enforcement, no treatment, why we can't find a way to do that so that it's consistent?
Um, I, I think it's a question of how timely we can work out the product related to the mix. I, I think as Charlie has, having walked many of these and taken pictures of them and looked at their signage, many of them are signed, tow-away, private, you know, you have to come in to get, cliff bar, this is for visitors, not for employees. They all have a, a message that implies ownership. And then, and a different number about whom I tow them.
Not really private.
And there, there is some sidewalk that then ends and then there are cars that are sometimes parked behind the sidewalk and some that are parked in, in front of it. So it's a, it's a question of is there a broader capital project to clear that up? Or is there going to be a lot of property fights?
One thing I would point out, I'm looking at a Google, you know, aerial photo of 63rd Street. At least the western half of it between Hollis and Overland on the south side.
63rd Street?
63rd, yes.
Okay.
That area right there, right. There's no curb, but there's a whole line of cars parked 90 degrees to the, 90 degrees to the street. So if we were to standardize that and make it into parallel parking, you'd probably lose about half those parking spaces.
Which is true of the northern locations as well.
But is, but is the 90-degree parking on public right-of-way where we could...
It's hard to tell. I would say probably most of it is.
So we could just enforce it and...
We could put key, you know, kiosk or meters in to regulate the 90-degree spaces, I suppose.
Yeah, we could do just a kiosk and a bunch of numbers.
Yeah.
You don't even, well, depending on how you set it up, you don't even need numbers for the kiosk.
Are we talking about 63rd stuff?
63rd Street.
But I mean, we could, you know, make, make all those cars predominantly have to use their cell phones. They're not, you know, they're, they're, they're coming in to work.
Well, as I previously said, you do, under state law, you do have to provide a physical means of paying in order to enforce it.
Yeah, we just have one kiosk and, you know, that seems like a likely place for that.
Can I say something? I think we really, if we're going to implement a parking management plan, need to know exactly what parking is ours in the city. And we need to have a consistent land use policy. If we are saying that our land is worth something and that you should pay to leave your car on it, then we can't just, because someone put a sign up, not do so. Lots of companies will claim or put a tow-away sign where it is not their right-of-way. And Scott's laughing because we had a lot of these conversations on Saturday when we were biking around. I would really like to see this investigated and brought back to us because frankly, I don't want to implement a policy and leave gaps because we, a company put up a tow sign and they don't own that and it's our right-of-way. That would be a giveaway. And that's not fair if we're asking residents to pay. That's my perspective. What's the rest of council think?
I agree with you. I don't, and I don't want to lose the spaces by turning them against the street. I think it's actually efficient to park at the angle that they're at right now.
Yeah, maybe the business owns one-third of that, they can give, give them reduced rate.
And we, all we'd have to do is paint some numbers right on the city right-of-way, right in front of each of those perpendicular spots and see what happens.
Okay.
I hope we would use technology consistent with technology used in other locations. Regarding the phasing, I think if, I hear the policy intent of, of getting to a pricing solution for perpendicular parking that is within the public right-of-way, perhaps to put it in phase two so that some of that work that you're talking about, learning the property lines and coming to agreements and notification could be done after we've implemented the first part.
But this area is in phase one.
Right, so I, so I think, so let me, I, I agree with what you're suggesting, so let me clarify a little bit. I think it's complete phase one, but as it's proposed right now, but subject to, the orange areas will be subject to phase two. And during phase one, we will study and get the answers to these orange areas so that when phase two begins, we'll just go up and clean up what needs to be done there.
That is...
Is that what you're proposing?
That was my suggestion.
However, the technology we choose in phase one might not be applicable to any problems we encounter in there. So unless we actually know what we might have to deal with in those areas, we can't make the best and informed choice about what technology to use.
Is that true?
Um, I think that we are looking at both having a, a kiosk solution and a non-kiosk solution. And might use each of those in different areas, might be a place we arrive at and that kiosk technology or the dual heads might be applicable to this area.
Did I answer your question or you're...
I think that was a maybe.
Well, given, earlier I heard a desire to have a robust discussion about the technology to be chosen, so I don't want to make the decision on technology.
Oh, yeah, no, totally. But I think, you know, what you're saying is correct. It's like, you, we can't really tell until we go look and see. If it, it turns out we can't put anything in all, any of those spaces because of a bunch of like capital improvement or private right-of-way problems, then it's not an issue. But if it turns out that that is our right-of-way and there's something we can do about that, I want to know about that before we choose the technology. And Diane's gone now. We lost her on that.
The license plate reader technology that's been talked about would be one way to register vehicles in those spaces with some, regardless of the change in the technologies.
Okay.
How about if we just give staff general direction that if they can pull this off, they'll choose the technology?
No.
No.
So that's three no's.
Sorry, Scott, that's three no's. Diane doesn't have to be here for that.
I have thoughts on this, Scott.
We're gonna review the technology as a group, that's coming back.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I...
That's also gonna be the single biggest expense, I mean...
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be the ticket item. So are you comfortable with having orange go into phase two for the timing or do you...
No, actually. I think, I think I've got a good reason. I think we need to know what's there.
So you've created like phase zero? Because it sounds like we can't do phase one.
I don't think we have adequate information for phase one if we don't actually know what's in those orange areas in terms of public right-of-way.
So, looking at the hour and thinking about that, what we've got going on, is there a point where we want to say, okay, let's take this to staff so we can come back in September and really look at it again?
We're, we're nearing that time, but I don't know that I'm just quite here, there yet, but yes.
All right.
So let me, let me do this. Let me put a pin in that and see how many other items we can take off the list.
Okay.
So in terms of just other zone, oh, I don't want that. No, I don't want this, I don't want the laser pointer. So the other two areas, I just wanted to briefly discuss, the, between 65th and 67th Street on the east side of Hollis. Are people comfortable with what's laid out there? Because that's the other area where we, we, 66 is the same, but we, we, if you remember, we made 67 the south side of it to be midterm so it could have this business permit overlay. You know, how, how do people feel about keeping it that way or would people prefer it to be the long-term meters?
I'm sorry, I just...
South side of 67?
No, I, just because I stepped out for a second, did I miss something on the west side?
We, we pinned it, we, we're coming back.
So that, we're coming back to the west side of 67 and 66. Just wondering, because Denver circled it. All right, thank you, go ahead.
So your thoughts on 67th Street?
I'll let somebody else talk.
Does anyone have an opinion on the south side of 67th or the north side for that It is the, those two blocks are the industrial blocks of the city. Is there the possibility of having long-termed meters across both of those streets, but also having a limited number of permits for the few businesses that operate on those streets at those spaces?
Spaces are in the public right-of-way, right?
Can we do a small zone like that? Is that too much? It is kind of a unique space to Mr. Martin's point. I mean, we don't even have curbs on the entire west side of the street. So I'm curious about whether, whether people who come to work there, I mean, they, those, you do have a big parking lot. But, you know, whether or not we, we need to do any, anything beyond what we're doing But, you know, whether or not we, we need to do any, anything beyond what we're doing there. What do people think about this?
I, I would like to address Mr. Martin's issues and, you know, when we come back to the west side of 67th and 66th, I'm wondering whether we could put permits on that side as well.
Well, yeah, we're, we're hoping to do that, but we need to get information from staff.
So adding additional permit areas will reduce revenue while increasing enforcement costs as a, as a general piece of information about what. So you have eliminated a number of meters throughout North Hollis to make them permits. If you add additional enforcement on two blocks with a lot of cars parked on them and make them permits, it, it will continue to be a high cost, low revenue solution. I think that is the preferred solution by the property owner on the east side and.
The preferred solution being what?
Permits.
Well, so if we leave it the south side of that block, if that's the angled parking anyways, midterm metered with business permit, people fine just leaving it the way it is then? I mean, I don't know what the solution is otherwise.
I don't have a good one.
Okay, well, this is subject to being, you know, refined, so we'll leave that be. The block of 53rd Street that was brought up. I, my proposal is that from Boyer Street, which is where the childcare center is, right there, nope. Right to your east, wrong way. Boyer Street is to the east, right there. Nope, almost to the border. In any event, Boyer Street. Thank you. From there to Spur Alley on the north side of the street, which is straight south of Doyle Street, that that area could be zoned yellow. Thoughts?
There to where?
To the Spur Alley, which is not on the map. Go, go to your left and end right there.
Oh, so this.
The north side of the street. Yep, that side of the street.
Just one side of the street.
Just one side of the street to Spur Alley.
I'm fine with that.
That's fine with me. My, my question on 53rd is the.
You're not going to get everything you want.
Yeah, let, let's let Amber highlight this. And then I, I would like to ask Amber about the drop-off zone from Vallejo to San Pablo on the south side of 53rd. This is here, we've got this as blue for long-term meters, but this is actually a long white zone in front of ECL.
So all the treatments, there's a caveat that was in the original presentation. Anything that exists as a white, blue, yellow, curb, red today is not proposed to be changed. So if that entire curb is white curb, we wouldn't be putting meters into there. And the, on the south side where there is the employee parking, that's also a, a conflict with the, the long-term meters where those are signed for employee parking.
Right. I just find, I guess I, I find it confusing to, to look at the map and to just know that that's mostly going to be untreated. Like that's a, that's a big block right there that I, that I know is a big white curb. But on this map that's going out to the public and will have ostensibly might have another opportunity to review this again, I think that might be a little misleading.
I think we could either distinguish it with white curb, but we're not marking where all the other white curb is. We could leave it as untreated or we could mark school zones. And there's probably three of those that could be marked on here.
My question is when school's not in session, is it an area that can be?
Certainly where the, next to Anna Yates and ECL on the, their south sides, they're signed for business hours. And so in the evening, they are legally available for residential parking.
I mean, like in July, when the school's not in session, the white zone on 53rd Street, it's not going to be.
People park there.
I know, but metered or not metered is my question. Does it have a meter in July as opposed to during school year?
It's, is it, I, I, this is a question I don't have the answer to, but is it efficacious and efficient to have a meter for a spot where it would only like get revenue in the summer?
I do not think so based on revenue estimates. But I'm confirmed with a consultant, but.
And parking in the summer, there's most likely going to be our employees.
Yeah. There's a lot of activity on the campus this summer, which is actually great.
Okay. Are there, have, are there other zones that people wish to discuss?
I have one little thing.
Yes.
If you look on Hollis Street in between Powell and 62nd, I think that whole thing should be short-term metered parking. I don't know why it's broken up.
Oh, what, the east side of the street?
Yeah.
Is there a staff explanation to why the east side between 59th and 62nd is long-term?
I'm going to look to my consultant on that one. Generally.
And let's add some revenue back into the system.
What? Appreciate, I mean, after the study session, the, after the mix of uses and changes, we ended up pretty neutral in, in terms of the changes. So that has happened by streamlining where meters are versus where they are not, so.
That, that one block, I did talk to a business that really wanted some client, you know, short-term client parking.
So there's been a request even for short-term parking on this block?
Yes.
So if there's no good reason why to not, I think we make that whole thing short-term parking. It's more consistent. It's like Russian roulette. What's that normally? Just businesses, right? That's not residential.
59th Street, that's next to the, that's next to the community garden.
Does everyone agree that, on the council, that this little strip?
Well, I've, I've, I've heard from one business that.
And nobody thinks for a good reason, no?
So, so, sorry. What's your, what is your recommendation?
Sorry, on Hall, I recommend that on Hollis between 59th and 61st Street, it becomes short-term metered parking on the east side.
And the TMA has asked for shorter term parking on Hollis.
Yeah, I, I, I second that because I think that's needed and we need to, we need to, we're, we're dropping out.
62nd, sorry. I meant from 59th to 62nd because there's another small smidgen in front of the park, which definitely should be short-term in my opinion as well.
So just, yeah, so everything from Powell to 62nd on the east side should be short-term metered.
Is that okay with everyone?
I've actually worked in that, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I've worked in that building at 59th and Hollis. And all of those people who park there, those are all long-term parking. Those are all folks who work in, in this complex and there's not enough parking for them, but.
There's so many garages in that neighborhood.
There's a huge surface parking lot behind that.
That is, I know. And I worked in a business where there were a certain amount of surface spaces, but many of us had to park on the street. And I often found myself parking in front of Ralph Holly when I, when I worked there. I don't disagree, but I'm just saying that the, the current use is long-term.
Business permit, they can park on 59th East of Doyle.
They sure can.
Okay, so it seems like we've got direction, 59th. Yep.
Yep.
And frankly, I mean, I'll ask about on both sides of 59th, is there any reason this isn't short-term metered parking? It's near the park, it's near the community garden.
Again, that spillover from Francis Collins.
I think that's truly long-term parking there need.
Okay.
Just pushing it.
Okay, so do we have any other changes that people wish, Diane?
Yeah, I do want to just discuss 65th. Oh, 65th Street. Because we had a couple of residents come speak this, at this meeting and at a previous meeting. So what the residents are asking for, and I believe they live right here in Glass House. Is that correct? So they, they think it would be more efficacious to have both sides of this street reflect one type of parking, either both sides residential business permit or both sides short-term parking with the permit overlay. And that would reduce everyone cramming onto one side of the street. I actually don't think it's a bad idea to have short-term parking on both sides of the street because I just was writing a little list to myself of how many restaurants are right there. And I think I got up to six.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Yuzu, Q2, Los Mole's, Subway, Starbucks. They're all right there. So I think short-term parking with a, with permit overlay, I think would make sense. As to, I think stopping at the greenway, I think makes sense too.
I just want to clarify that the police department has had concerns about how we will implement the proposed overlay with midterm meters. There has been no proposals yet to date for short-term or long-term. I've heard council members speak to both those possibilities. The concern is as you move to those kinds of solutions, you're making the enforcement significantly more complex.
If we do what specifically?
If you add permits to different hour. And part of it, and Bill and I have had some conversations, I don't know if you want to talk to that, the, the different hours of those will change how often they need to be gone to.
I didn't hear anyone propose that though. Is that, was that what you proposed?
I guess what you were just proposing was overlay.
I wasn't talking about any different hours, but I was talking about possibly doing short-term meters on the south side of 65th, right here.
I'm sorry.
See how the street is split up? There are short-term meters on the north side. And then there's, there's a permit parking on the south side.
I'll point out, there is also a Ford Go Bike station at the corner there that takes that place. Like the first three spaces worth.
So what we haven't, what Amber's saying is we, what we haven't talked about is any overlay with short-term or long-term parking that we've talked, is that correct, Amber?
Yes, and Bill was prepared to say something about that if that's helpful.
Yep.
Yeah, so we did look closely at this whole idea of, of possibly allowing permits to park at the short-term meters. But as you've heard a number of times, the short-term meters are where we're generating the revenue that really drives this whole program. So one problem with doing that is that you're essentially opening up the, the best spaces to people to park. And, and what you'll probably see is that those spaces will end up being highly used by, by permit parkers. So it kind of defeats that idea.
And that's the challenge because residents want access to as many spaces as possible. But they also want parking for us. And I heard a lot of people say, well, enforce the existing laws, enforce these things. People don't understand there's not funding to enforce those things. And so the whole point of the system is to generate a revenue neutral scheme that allows us to enforce and keep your businesses having turnover and dedicated resident and small business spaces. So, I mean, I, I'm interested to hear what your proposal is.
So we just haven't contemplated short-term parking with permit overlays as a, as a, as a revenue, revenue generation, like we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't break even.
They determined it wouldn't work. Yeah.
You might as well just forget about the short-term spaces and make it, make it permit. But then of course, then you're losing revenue.
Lose money though.
Yeah. No, I, I do think we need the, the short-term spaces on the north side of the street. So I guess my, I guess my recommendation is to keep it as it is, unfortunately.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. And I would just remind us that that was originally proposed to be meters on both sides of the street. And the compromise is there is resident space. And if residents are concerned that people will just park for free in the resident space, you have to remember, it's resident space overnight. Residents can park their car overnight, leave their car overnight. If they're going out of town or they're going, they're not going to drive it. The residents are in the prime position to be the first people to park their car on the south side of the street. So this is a balancing act and I think that that's the balance. I'm most supportive of the status quo on this. We made the change last time, I think.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. Are there other, are there other zones to, to propose discussing changes to before we move to the questions? Okay, I think you've received feedback on this. Can we go to the questions page? However, that works.
It works by me toggling and then getting into, there we go.
There are.
That's how it works.
Okay, are the phases and milestones for each phase appropriate, council? Yeah.
I've voiced that I'm uncomfortable moving forward without some information about the public-private right of way.
That was the issue with the orange while you were out. She wants us to not do phase one until we know whose public and whose private right of way on the orange zones.
Because I also think it might add a consideration which technology we go with.
I think that's fair.
So you delay the whole thing to do all the homework?
I'm, I am not in a super rush to implement. I feel like there, every time we look at this, that there's something new that we see.
So what's the timeline on spending the money? June 30th we have to start?
Yeah, so we have a grant of just under a million dollars for the North Hollis area, the capital costs. We became eligible to spend it starting July 1 and we have currently entered the funding agreement until July 30th of next year. So the timelines that you're starting to discuss may require that we need to do a funding agreement and measure BB funds are under significant pressure to get some funds out the door, start showing progress to taxpayers, so.
I will just let everybody know that one of the timing reasons why this is being moved is that the Transportation Commission, we are not in compliance with how much we need to spend, I believe, right now. We need to spend down this account and we, there is a policy being proposed to revert funds given to cities that don't spend the minimum requirement of, if you just hold reserves, they're going to start taking it back. Now, I don't know how much that translates to us. I don't feel like it's a ton, but it, this is a.
And, and there are two sets of funds. So what, I think the funds you're referring to are those that are not competitively released, but rather are per capita. And so we have a variety of funds that are managed in public works in that pool. And then this is a competitively awarded grant that has its own set of rules regarding its funding agreement for the timely use of funds.
Clarifying question. So there, they can't take back the money if we still spend it before the deadline, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. If we take this up in September and have that robust conversation about all of the spaces, public-private right of way and techn, and technology in September, and then start moving forward, can we spend money in time to make sure we don't lose any money?
I think that it is staff's intention to be able to deliver that in that time.
But if we push it to September, understanding that that was.
Second meeting in September is too soon or not too soon to have those answers to just the public-private right of way issues?
We, we certainly will do our best.
Use the microphone for everyone.
We will certainly, I, we will engage in those questions and bring them back as timely as we can.
If I may just clarify, we're talking about the areas in the North Hollis District that are indicated as no treatment.
Yes, and the block of Hubbard between 40th and Park, which has no curbs or sidewalks, but somehow is still marked purple. Should probably be marked orange if you're being consistent, but that whole block has no curbs or sidewalks.
Okay.
And actually, the entire east side of Hubbard Street has no curbs or sidewalks.
But Sherwin-Williams project is going to fix that.
So maybe that's, I don't know if the south block of Hubbard is also getting that treatment when Sherwin-Williams happens. That may be why we're planning it that way then. So maybe that's not an issue. But, okay. So I think we're going to have, no matter what, this come back with some answers to the questions. But beyond that issue, are people fine with the phasing? In terms of doing the phasing when it comes to?
Yes.
Great. Is the revised pricing and policy for residential permits appropriate? So we had $67 for one, $133 for two, and the third car at $200. Do people have thoughts, Mr. Donahue?
Yeah, I think it's good.
Yeah, she left. I was just wondering in case she's watching at home, if you could clarify for Ruth Major's question, what the threshold is to qualify for the low-income pricing on residential permits.
So we were tying this to very low income. So we didn't have a tiered based on any other. This is just the existing policy. And so I, I do not know the AMI or area median income that qualifies, but it would be tied to what we were doing in our housing.
I think it's 60%.
50 or 60% most likely.
Of AMI.
Right, yeah. But in terms of translating that into a number. So it, it, I mean, very low is at a, I think some of the complexities that were brought up were about households. When you have six individuals and we're looking at that a household, that would be complicated to look at meeting that criteria with those six individuals if they were working in individuals. You know, usually you would have a lower AMI for a family of six with four of them being kids, not making any income versus six adults.
When it, yeah, when it's six adults, how do you work that out for the household? Is it just per household?
We would really be tying this to however we do that with our housing, just to keep the policy as consistent and.
Can you bring that back when this comes back, just so we're clear? Thank you.
Okay, so others regarding the pricing and policy for residential permits?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Donahue.
Well, I just wanted to hear again about how difficult the placard condition is. It's a technical, I know it's technical, but.
If we're going to bring this back for technology, we'll, we'll do that then.
Okay, so please, please bring back feasibility and logistics of, of placards.
And given that we are looking at the license plate readers, one of the things we're trying to do is look at the possibility of the placard being something that communicates to the public and the license plate being what communicates to the enforcement officer. But specifically, we're looking at the possibility of multiple license plates being tied to a single permit that is then represented by a placard. And it isn't by looking, so it might be a two-step process. This, this license is in the system and it has the placard in the car. This license is in the system, but the placard's not in the car. That means two cars are parked on one permit and they get a ticket. So that's how it complicates it, but that might be a possibility of moving to enforcement.
Okay. Okay. Is the revised pricing and allocation limits for business permits appropriate? My question is how many business permits are we estimating we'll provide?
I was adding that it's in the plan and it is a total.
Please use the microphone.
I'm just mumbling.
That's okay, I know. But people at home are freaking out because they can't hear you.
Mumbling into the plan. Do you have that at the ready? It's the business permits. I added these together. So we are looking at 300, 400, five, about 1,000 in all phases, citywide business permits. And that's leaving about, that's a lot. 300 in those same areas are often 25% when it's metered as available space.
Right.
Either by paying the meter or staying within the two hours in the permit zone.
Do council members have comments on the pricing? Or the allocation limits by business size?
No.
My only question on that item is just how you reached those, was that a mathematical algorithm we used to obtain that, that analysis? Because it was a little odd how smaller businesses had to step up and then the middle-sized businesses, I thought it was a little weird how we, we gave them a cap. The, the cap on the number of permits they got was unusual in relation to the number of people at the businesses. It just, it was, I was trying to understand the, the math. It looked like a sine curve to me when it translated.
the math. It looked like a sine curve to me when it translated onto a graph.
There have been a number of people representing businesses in the 56 to 100 that have called to me and said, "This is a significant concern. We have no off-street parking, or we have very limited, and I'm going to need a lot of permits." And there's been this tension between, okay, are a few mid-sized businesses, each needing 50, going to take the first 200, versus that need to meet the urgency that they're expressing. And so it's a little off because of that market demand that's been expressed by these mid-sized businesses, but it certainly can be altered, and we would have assumed that this was a first cut to show as illustration, and that we would resolve either by setting that an actual percentage of your total, actual employment. So you get a cap that says you can only get up to 50% of your employees at whatever size, except for, and then add a numeric cap, because it couldn't be exactly perfect where if, say, you have Pixar, they have 2,000 employees, they're 50%, just like the small business, now they need 1,000 permits, and that's our entire stock. So we need both, perhaps, a percentage as well as a numeric cap in each of these three categories. Maybe the percentage stays consistent, but the total cap is adjusted for the business size.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that? Was there a fourth question on the last slide that I missed?
Um, it was. Do you have any other questions?
Oh, okay, all right. So then, on this one, should the parking under the Powell Street Bridge be long-term meters or midterm meters with business permit overlay? All in favor of long-term, raise your hand. All in favor of midterm with park business, raise your hand. All those who have a different point of view, raise your hand.
I don't have an opinion.
You don't have an opinion? Okay, so midterm meters with business permit overlay. Should the existing eight motorcycle parking spaces be designated for free or metered and permitted?
Free.
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 Yeah, I agree.
Should midterm meters with business permit overlay be designated south of Harough on Horton Street? Midterm meters, I'm looking at the little map here.
Harough.
On the east side or the west side of Horton Street?
I think there was a question posed by the audience.
You have no treatment on the east side of, south of Harough.
Correct. So it was on the...
I think there's no parking there.
It's just a bike lane.
Right.
So it's not that it has no treatment, it's a black line along it, which implies that there is red curb there.
Yeah, it's, there's no parking area. It's a bike lane and then sidewalk.
So it would be the west side of Horton Street that we're asking about?
Okay, so the west side of Horton Street, which is actually, yeah, from Harough south, do people want to leave it as long-term or midterm meters with business permit overlay?
Right by the anthill?
No, it's south of Powell Street.
South of Powell, over passing.
So it's this block right here.
Okay. What's in the rest of that neighborhood? It's, right now, it's designated long-term?
Right now, it's long-term, but they're asking if we should change it to midterm.
Yes. I mean, it's surrounded by short-term, so it makes sense that that's a higher turnover area.
Okay, so I have one vote to change it to midterm. Others?
Midterm.
Two votes. Diane, do you have a thought?
What are the businesses?
That's where Jared's Pottery is. That's where...
Oh, yeah, midterm then, yeah.
Midterm.
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 So just to clarify, I would assume we're talking about all the way from Stanford to Powell?
Stanford to Powell, yes.
We wouldn't just...
Yes, not like a 10-foot zone at a time, no. Yes, the whole thing. My question is just whether Harough Street should be long-term or the same thing. Is that a fair question?
Yes.
Do you want to just make Harough the same thing, or do you want long-term parking on Harough? It's like, what, eight spaces, maybe?
Harough is currently designated with midterm.
Actually, your map doesn't have anything on it, or does it?
Mine shows midterm.
Midterms. Oh, it is. So I have the old map. Okay, never mind, we leave it the way it is. All right. Okay, so what's the next question? Should short-term meters be installed on the east side of...
We've already covered this geography.
Okay, we did that. Is that all the questions? Okay, do you feel you have sufficient guidance to come back at the second meeting in September with the answers to the technology and the public versus private right-of-way issue?
I'd like more guidance about what the questions are about the technology. Our process was going to be to bring RFPs for the technology and to see what people could propose to us with specifications of what we expected. Smart, meaning credit card reading, whatever the base of that going into, phone technology comparable with Oakland and Berkeley, and then meeting that multi-space criteria that our funding has for the North Hollis area as well.
Great, so I'd like to propose two things, if counsel will be amenable. One is, since you're going to come back with this public versus private info and some of these other update the map and some changes here, I would like to nominate Vice Mayor Medina to have conversations with you and the city manager between now and the preparation of the September agenda to just not, to your point, we're not doing the RFP right now, but to simply provide us some information about what those options look like, so we're more informed as we make these other decisions and vote this thing out, what it is we're potentially considering, so that if we have an implementation issue, we don't go down the road too far, and we voted for something, and then we're like, well, wait, if I had known that would be how we did, I wouldn't, I don't want to put you in that place. So I think that the best way, since I feel, unless others disagree, she's the most versed on this, is to just recommend that we let staff work with the vice mayor. Is that okay?
Watch for me.
Christian, you okay with that?
Yep.
Are you good with that?
Of course, for Amber.
Amber, Jim, and maybe Andrew, I don't know. Andrew, going once, going twice, and Ally will get together. And does that address the question you have?
Will address it.
Okay. Did you have guidance then on the other items? Did you have any other questions that you needed answered?
No, you've gone through all of my questions.
Well, I want to thank you for all the hard work you put into this. This is an extremely complex process, and it's a lot of work, and I appreciate how much work you put into it.
Thank you, and thank you for your guidance tonight.
Thank you. So since there's a resolution in front of us, what I'd like to do is, I would like to make a motion to continue this to September 17, 2018.
17.
17. It's on a Monday, because we have a Jewish holiday on the 18th.
Okay, nobody told me that.
Yep, Monday, the 17th. So I make a motion.
I was going to be on vacation.
Who is my second?
Me, I was.
Just want to be clear about that, that's important.
Motion by Mayor Bouders, second by Councilmember Martinez, to continue this matter to September 17. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Potts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. Okay, item 12.3 is the City Council update related to the Police Administration Building at 2449 Powell Street.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I'll frame this, but actually, the city council, the mayor and city council asked that this item come to the council as a result of a citizen who has raised questions concerning whether the public safety facility, the police operations building, meets code relative to its egress. The council has received, of course, the report and the agenda, which does, in fact, state that it does meet code. There's also a correspondence from our chief building inspector that explains why it meets code and how it meets code that's been provided to the council. And then beyond that, staff took the liberty of, if we wanted to improve the public access, and as we all know, there's always a challenge with a public safety building, because it is the police operations piece, and the public access and police operations are a challenging thing to balance. But we also proposed three different kind of possible solutions in the long run that might improve the egress, and those are listed in that report. And Mayor, the staff is prepared to answer any questions the council may have. This has been an effort of almost every department, actually, from police to fire, to our Community Development Department, to Public Works, and Legal Department, and the city manager's office. So we stand ready to answer any questions the council has.
Thank you. Before we take the questions, I'd like to invite the public to comment. Members of the public who wish to speak have three minutes to do so. You may approach the podium now.
The city manager just posed a question. He says that there's no problem at all here. It's perfectly legal. There is a fire escape that's legal, he says. And then he goes on to say that you should improve it. Why would you improve something that's perfectly fine? Why waste public money? We're asking the five of them to spend public money unnecessarily. Why would you ask them to do that? That's absurd. And it is absurd because it is false. He made a false statement, that it is, in fact, not legal egress. Okay, the first sentence in this letter you got from Mr. Holgerson, I found three untruths. Starts with the first word, "Recently, staff has become aware that emergency egress from the second floor lobby." He used the word "recently." Well, that's false. I've let this council know for over three years. The council has been aware, the city of Emeryville has been aware of this problem for over three years. Why would you use the word "recently"? Unless you think three years is recently. No, that's, so it's totally, I can't say any reason why you use that word, other than the fact that you want to take away from, like, this embarrassing situation. In other words, it's embarrassing to say that you've known about this for three years. Not you personally, but the city's known about this for three years and not done anything. That's embarrassing. So I posit that that's the reason why the word "recently" was used. While complying with minimum code requirements, it does not comply with minimum code requirements. It is illegal. The California Fire Code and the UBC and this California Building Code all specify, and you can look this up, that you cannot have an encumbrance in a fire escape. And right now, there are locked doors there. So it is absolutely legal, illegal. California Fire Code is section, I'm sorry, it's Chapter 10 speaks to no encumbrances, no building, parts of the building may invade on the space for egress. So I count three untruths in the very first sentence. So he says it's less than ideal. Why would you care? So he said it's legal, but it's less than ideal. Why do you care? If it's legal, you, I think you should call his bluff. Consider calling his bluff, and just say, "Well, we're not going to spend public money on something we don't need to," and then just ignore this problem, and then see what happens. And it's really discouraging to me to start right out by saying recently that the city's been made aware of this problem, when it's been three years. It's really disrespectful.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Donahue. Are there other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, I would like to ask our Public Safety Chair, Mr. Pass, if he'd like to comment first.
So I get to spend this week doing jury duty. I'm at the Wiley Manual Courthouse in downtown Oakland, and I'm on the sixth floor of that courthouse all week. And I don't have access to the stairs. They are locked. And so in the event of a fire, I have to wait for any of the number of bailiffs there to unlock the stairs to allow me to evacuate the premises. And I'm okay with that. And that is the exact same situation we have at our police station, is the people whose job it is to run towards the danger or fire are there when people are in the lobby, and they're there to unlock the door. And I see this as a non-issue. I double down. I won't call your bluff. I'll double down and say it's, we're meeting code. There are people there to unlock the egress. I'm under the impression that Alameda County Fire is going to look into it, and if they tell us otherwise, then we can take action. But from right now, what I'm hearing is that there is no issue. This is a non-starter. Is it ideal? I don't know. I've never really understood that. But to me, if there's a locked fire escape, there's still a fire escape. There are people there to unlock it. So I don't see this as a problem.
Thank you. I'd like to go to the other Public Safety Committee member, Mr. Donahue.
I read that our building official thinks that it is legal. He offered various sections of code saying it was legal. So I think we should do nothing about it. We shouldn't spend any money on it.
Member Martinez?
So we were, it was brought to our attention that plans for the second floor of the police department were redacted before being released to the public, and I support that, because I don't want the public to have plans to our police department. I realize that folks can go in there and take measurements, and take a look, and take photographs, and they're invited to do that. They can do that. That's an open public space. But in as far as the context of architectural planning, I don't think that's a document that needs to be out there. I think that people do very sensitive work in that building, and I think that was completely appropriate as a response to a Public Records Act request.
Vice Mayor Medina?
I have no comment.
I have some comments. I want to thank my colleagues for all their insight. I have not a different point of view, but this issue, I want to thank you for bringing this issue. I want to thank you. Because the reason you brought this issue, and it was not recent, and I don't take issue with the city manager's characterization of it, because he's very recent, right? But I do, I do think you are right about some things. I do. And I want to just paint my comments at a high level first, because I really had a hard time with this issue. This was a very, very challenging issue, and most of the people in this room will tell you I had an hour call with one or more of them at some point, to really help form my thoughts on this issue. So predating our police chief, what happened here was a transfer of risk. So we redesigned and made improvements to the police department, and there was an awareness that the plans that were approved by our building official did not adequately contemplate the need for public safety towards the officers who worked there, the safety and maintenance of guns in the armory, the evidence room. There were a number of legitimate, very legitimate, to Councilmember Martinez's comment about not sharing public information. There is a lot of legitimate reasons why we do not want people in that space. That being said, a change was made, and that change transferred a legitimate risk from one sector to another, which is now the public risk is in danger, to your point, which I think is a fair point. And my concern and my issue, honestly, and I don't normally do this publicly, my issue is with the lack of adequate staff communication in discussing changes. I have an issue. The building inspector is not here tonight, but I would have one verbal lashing if he was here, which is, don't ever go into the media ever again and say to the public, "Building officials approve things, and after they approve it, tenants make improvements that are sometimes outside of the code." The tenant is the city of Emeryville. That is a ridiculous statement. That is a ridiculous statement. The tenant is the city of Emeryville, and if the city of Emeryville needs to make improvements to improve the safety of officers and people in the police department, that is fine, but that is a conversation that police, Public Works, the building official, the city manager, all the actors at that time, who are not in this room, fair enough, need to have with one another. The only person who's here to answer to that is, in theory, the building official. Okay? And so that mitigating risk that has been transferred from one form of risk to another is a question that's being proposed to us tonight. I don't think that the building official addressed this issue properly, because he was aware of it three years ago. I think that the appropriate thing to do is be transparent, and if changes were made in 2015 or 16, it is incumbent on the staff in this city to simply bring that to our attention and allow us to make a change to protect the public interest, the public safety. So it is conflicting for me. I agree with you. It is conflicting for me to hear, "There is not a problem, but we should spend money and fix something." That doesn't make sense to me. If there really is a need to improve the public safety, why are we hearing about this three years after the building official knew? I don't understand that. That doesn't make any sense to me. So that's a question. The other thing I have an issue with is that we received, as council, information that included a fire report. The interesting thing to me was that no members of the fire department were included on that email, and the fact of the matter is that that type of structure is not approved by the fire official. It is approved by the building official. The fire official only approves accessory B purpose... approves accessory B, B purpose exits. It does not approve the whole building. The fire official approves the assembly room in the police station, but not the entire, am I correct, Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Yes. So the reliance and presentation to council as if the building is safe because the fire official has approved it. The fire official doesn't have the authority nor the responsibility under the California Building Code to approve that entrance or exit. It's the building official, which is the same reason why the city manager and the city attorney have deferred to the building official's judgment because that's the only person under California law who can make these determinations. So I have a problem with the building official because the building official has known for three years and didn't take any action on this. The building official, I understand for perfectly good reasons, is not here tonight, but has made statements in the media that the tenants make changes. And the tenants make changes, that's true, but the tenant is the city. So I agree that the law says that the building official would make this determination. And you, as the public, have every right, I think, to scrutinize the building official because that's appropriate in this circumstance. But I also believe that because the law allows that and because I asked the city attorney and the building official to provide the legal bases for why the building official was citing on this, those, those reasons have been provided and they are legally sufficient. So I agree with Councilmember Pats that there's nothing to do tonight, but I think it's important to have this conversation because we should just own up to things when they happen and fix them. And that's the purpose of my comment tonight. Are there any further comments?
No.
No. Okay, we're moving on behind item 12.3 to item 12.4, designation of the voting delegate and alternate to the League of California Cities Conference. Wave presentation, public comment for this item? Is there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, item 12.4, there's, we need an alternate and a regular person, correct?
We're doing one, two, three, not it.
I would like to nominate Vice Mayor Medina to be the regular. Is there someone who can be the alternate?
I don't know that anybody else has registered to attend. And we don't have to have an alternate, but...
Would you like to be the alternate?
Those dates don't work for me.
I'm out of town. Okay, so I'll make a motion to designate Vice Mayor Medina as our representative to the League of California Cities Annual Conference.
I'll second.
Second.
There's a motion by the mayor, a second by member Pats. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Potts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. It's approved. Item 13, department head reports. Charlie? No report from Charlie. Andrew? Fire? Police? Anybody going once? No. Future agenda items?
I just wanted to know if we were going to be contemplating whatever's on the agenda at the League of Cities for policy committees in September.
We get a packet, don't we usually?
We will get a packet. I haven't received that yet.
Can we just make sure that we have space on the first meeting and the September 4th meeting to...
Yes.
To consider that.
And if I get it during our break, for example, there's no reason why I can't forward it to you.
Great.
Thank you. Other members who have requests for future agenda items?
Okay, this is a ceremonial item, idea, that our city is the city of art and innovation. And one of the industries in our town is the biotechnology sector, which we are really represented with those businesses. And there, in Thursday, a week ago, was an article in New York Times about a lab in San Francisco associated with UCSF where they had a major breakthrough that will affect our species. It has to do with reprogramming human T cells, white cells in our bodies that can then be used to fight cancer, beat AIDS. The way that they're doing it is not with viruses, but using electric fields, electromagnetic field. It's like so cheap, fast and easy. It's really potentially transformative to a lot of the businesses in our city. And it might be good if we could have some kind of award and recognize things in this field that is so much a part of our city.
Are you asking for a proclamation?
Perhaps a proclamation on this.
And when would you like to do that?
Sometime that's convenient for everyone.
I have no opposition to that. Is anyone?
It's fine.
Do you have thoughts on that? No. Okay, since, why don't you and I connect then about that, doing that, so I can work with the city clerk to put that together?
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other future agenda items? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, the time is 11:09. The meeting is adjourned.